You all.
I'm Sharon Guy.
Councilmember Theresa.
Councilmember Zach Munster.
City Attorney Emily.
Finance Director Mark here.
Before we start, I'm sure probably everybody already knows us, but if you don't, on Friday, June 9th, there will be a celebration of life for Mayor Al Hall at Silver View Park from 3:30 to 8:00. Council workshops are informal gatherings of the council at which no final decisions are made, where there's consensus discussion to direct staff on council decision items. First item on tonight's agenda is the Tubman fiscal request. Now?
And I'm just going to turn it over to our police chief in one minute because our guest, because he's much more familiar with this than our guests and I. I don't know anything about it. Yeah, so Tubman, we've got a very good relationship with them. Whenever we have domestic assaults or anything like that, we always, they're a great resource for sheltering, advocacy, and things like that. So our city prosecutor Katrina has been doing a great job. We send her all the cases and then they refer to you guys to Tubman. So Jen Dickinson, if you wanted to talk a little bit about Tubman and what you offer and your services.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jen Dickinson. This is my coworker Emily Barnhill. So we're going to kind of tag team some information for you all and feel free to jump in with questions if you have any as we proceed. So basically Tubman, what we're here to talk about is our legal advocacy services. Tubman also provides a lot of other services that we'll just touch on later that clients that we work with are able to access some of these other services as well. But with legal advocacy, like Jen said, typically the way that it works is that the police call or intervention line, which is a 24/7 line that is a number specific for law enforcement to call us to give us information about a domestic assault case, violation of an order, anything domestic related. That call goes into our shelter, answered by shelter staff, takes the information down, party's information, police report number, a little synopsis of what the incident was, and then we in turn make that initial contact with the victim. You know, studies have found the sooner that you get in touch with victims of violence, the better rapport you have, the more likely they are to stay engaged in the process and know about what resources are available to them. So that's what we talked about at first is, you know, immediate safety planning. Was this person arrested? Do they need to come to shelter if they, you know, if that person was held gun on arrival? Do they need to get somewhere else safe? Do they have transportation to do that? Are they interested in either a domestic abuse no contact order or an order for protection? Those pieces. And then we let them know that someone from our legal department will be in touch with them on the next business day to kind of follow through more about what the next steps are going to look like for the court process. So we follow the cases, misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor cases for all the suburban Ramsey County cities all the way through the court process. We, you know, contact the victim before court. We get their court calendar from the jail. We prepare the domestic abuse no contact orders for the prosecutor and then contact the victim, let them know what to expect with the arraignment process, ask about their input regarding a Dango domestic abuse no contact order and other concerns that they have. Maybe there's chemical issues, mental health issues, things like that that they want passed on. And then we physically go to court, pass all that information on to the prosecutor so that they're aware of the situation and then follow up with the victim afterwards. Then we follow those cases all the way through court. If the victim ever has to come to court, we help facilitate those meetings with Katrina. So if we have somebody come, I'll let her know, hey, we have so-and-so here on this case, they'd like to meet with you to get input. And throughout this process, we're still doing a lot of safety planning. That's an ongoing thing. It might look different from the beginning of the case to the end of the case and also talk about a lot of other resources. If somebody wants to file an order for protection, then we help draft. If they want that assistance, we can help draft orders and file them with the court. Our staff attorney, he files them with the court. And then if there is a hearing scheduled, we have another program called the Safety Project. And if the person qualifies based on income, we will refer to our Safety Project to see if one of our volunteer attorneys will take their case and represent them in that process. It used to be, back when I started, many, many, many years ago, most people didn't have representation on the order for protection. You just went into court, told your story, you know, and the judge or the referee decided. But over time, it's become more complicated. There's a lot of temporary issues that are discussed, including custody of kids, temporary child support, programming sometimes. And so, you know, the client that we're working with is really at a disadvantage to not go into court without an attorney. So we try to help make that happen. We also have other legal services, including attorneys that will help clients draft legal paperwork or respond to legal paperwork, such as a divorce or a custody motion, and also some pro bono representation on family law cases. Obviously, those cases take a long time typically, so those are a little bit harder to place and there's often a waiting list for that. Over time, we also have some other Tubman services. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so our other Tubman services, as Jen touched on, we do have a shelter program, which is, provides temporary housing for folks that are experiencing domestic violence. We also have clinical services and a lot of youth services. So our youth programming goes out to schools and the community to really engage youth in the conversation around violence prevention. Our clinical programming, we provide sometimes one-on-one counseling, family counseling, support groups through that to really take a holistic approach in the depth of services that we're able to offer each client. So on our legal services side, we're not the one actually doing all those, but we, you know, can refer clients amongst ourselves to make sure that all these different areas of a person's life, you know, housing, mental health, their legal advocacy can get met at one place.
And so what brings us here is that over the last couple of years, we have experienced some funding cuts for Ramsey County. Ramsey County does not provide any support for Tubman at all. We used to have, get a pretty small amount, like a half-time position, and when we lost that funding, we had to cut that position. And we experienced some other cuts and really some flat funding over the last several years. And as you know, expenses have went up, cost of staff have went up, you know, it's really a competitive market right now. And so about, almost two years ago, we had, we had lost, well, we made the decision that we had to cut a full-time staff person in the Ramsey County advocacy program. Because of that cut, we had to reduce services. And so as part of that, we used to do all of the domestic-related cases, meaning all relationships, not only intimate partner, but siblings, parent-child, roommates, all of those that qualify under the domestic statute. Well, because we haven't been able to do those anymore, that's fallen on Katrina's shoulders that really, now she's got to be responsible for keeping in touch with those victims, making sure that their victims' rights are met, victims have a right to be notified about what's going on with the court process, they have a right to give input on plea agreements, they have a right to be present. There's a number of victims' rights that need to be upheld. And so we try to work with the prosecution to make sure that those things are happening. But we had to make a decision that in order to focus on the cases that we were covering, the intimate partner cases, and doing a more holistic approach that way, we had to make the decision to no longer cover the other cases, which has resulted, I think, if you look at the numbers, in the 23% reduction in services in the last year.
And if I could just add to something Jennifer was saying, it's important to keep in mind that as an attorney, a lot of people say, okay, there's a term of time privilege. My clients as a prosecutor are not individual crime victims. So any conversations that I have with a victim of crime, I have to disclose those to the defendant or their attorney. Whereas when Jennifer or one of her other advocates, and I've worked with Jennifer for 20 years, when they have a conversation with a crime victim, those conversations are protected. She'll pass information on to me that won't even be disclosed, but the vast majority of the conversations she has are going to be privileged. And I want to just give you guys an idea of the impact that the cuts, necessary is not a criticism, but an impact for the crimes that have. So two weeks ago, I had one defendant with four cases. The defendant is charged with violation of restraining orders in all four of those cases. It is a daughter, is the defendant, the victim is her father. And that crime victim is not going to receive the same level of services as part of the court process as, for instance, the two gross misdemeanor domestic assaults that we had charged about over this weekend because those involved intimate partner violence. So all of the things that Jennifer is talking about in terms of connecting them with services that they may need, connecting them with the shelter services, my office is not equipped to have those conversations. I would refer them to Tubman under normal circumstances. And so there's that breakdown where there's this group of people, and unfortunately, it is, it is consistent and not rare that the domestic violence cases that we see in the city involve family members that are not intimate partners, as in for their parents, children, siblings. And those individuals are getting a different level of service right now, which is unfortunate because it's the same dynamics and the same impacts on those crime victims.
And in years past, those have been some of the most time-intensive cases. You know, you've got, for example, son, adult son living in a home assaults mom, maybe struggling with chemical issues, struggling with mental health issues. You know, mom has wanted to support their child this whole time and just wants their kid to get help, and how do we make that happen? But yet mom needs a ton of support. You know, this isn't something new, this is something that's been going on for years and maybe it's the first time they've reached out for help. So that, you know, doing this work for all these years, that was really, really difficult for, to make that decision to have to reduce services, but that's never something we want to do is have to turn people away.
And especially when the victim is a parent and they're older, they're, you know, in their 70s or 80s, those individuals need more support. They need more access to services because the person that they're living with who is potentially their user is also their support network or their caregiver.
So questions?
Well, like we and Patra were talking about just briefly here, we just had three domestic assaults over the weekend. And we, all three of them, we called Tubman for and referred the victims to Tubman. So given the fact that I hand out some flyers, it's the lethality assessment, as long as some index cards for resources and phone numbers. So we, we're right there with the victim when it happens. We, it's a voluntary form, we ask them the necessary questions and we fill out the form. So when we call Tubman, preferably right when we're on scene, that way we get them the resources and the number right away on scene without saying, you know, call me later or I'll check in later. Right away on scene, one officer takes care of one part and then the other officer takes care of the victim. So when we read that lethality assessment and they answer those questions, Tubman is going to say, well, what questions do they answer yes to? And we go through the lethality and, you know, yes to whatever numbers, that way they know kind of what they're dealing with. So I think it's really important that, and the officers have been really good about getting in touch with Tubman right away. If they don't and they go to a different call, before they leave for shift, they notify Tubman, let them know, again, like you talked about, the synopsis of what happened and resources. And so they already know what the situation is. So like this morning, Monday morning, when we're getting requests from reports, they already kind of have an idea of what happened and what's going on. So when our front office staff comes into reports, they can pass everything and, you know, everything, you know, right, resources, everything. I think it's invaluable that when something happens that, you know, having worked nights for 16 or 17 years, calling somebody at 3:00 in the morning and saying, hey, I got a victim here, here's what I got, you know, hand the phone number to the victim and make that connection right away. So we have had a great relationship over the years. So I think it's an invaluable resource that we should continue to do.
So council visited with this workshop earlier in the year and we have the staff got a lot of feedback. So your specific request is entering this year since 25,435,48.
Sure. I'm not going to argue. Yes. It would be ideal, yes, for 2023 if that's doable in the budget. I feel like we kind of came into this process a little late, kind of end of the year last year, which we realize. It's our understanding there might be some state funding that came from the legislature for police departments and things like that. I've heard that from other cities. But if you could do that in 2023, that would be fantastic. Definitely looking at 2024 for sure. So I don't know the status of your budget at this point. I know we're halfway through the year, I recognize that, but if it's on the table, I would absolutely be, indeed fantastic.
What would be the amount you would be looking for on an annual basis? That same amount?
Yes, that, well, that's the number that we came up with. So prior to my taking over the, my new role, we had developed a cost per service, basically an average cost of what a typical criminal case costs to go through that process, a typical order for protection, taking into account number of case, number of court appearances, you know, average court appearances, time was spent providing support, drafting paperwork, things like that. And so the cost of services is only based on staff, it's not based on other program costs or other core mission support, only on staff. And so that's kind of where, where we came up with that number, based on the number of actual amounts of cases that we've worked on in the last.
And you're applying on C3.
Yes.
So we have a similar contract in the range of what you're doing. Do you have a contract template?
I do, I do. I have a couple, actually. I have one that, we have a contract with Falcon Heights for this year, so I have that contract that I can share with you. I've also developed a contract, a little simpler one, for Badness Heights. It's my understanding that they've approved some funding, I think, more for 2024, but they've asked me to start working on a contract. So I could provide that to you, you could review it and let me know if there's any changes that need to be made.
Also questions we have for Jen and Emily? Zach?
So the people that you're not serving now, that 23%, what, I'm assuming you have other people who refer them if you don't yet?
Well, we'd like to, but that's one of the biggest gaps in the system because other agencies, other advocacy agencies also do not serve beyond intimate partner relationships for the most part. So if we refer, so in the suburbs, there's no other agency that provides criminal legal advocacy, no other agencies go to criminal court for the suburban Ramsey County cases. There is another advocacy group that covers the city of St. Paul, and there's a couple of other advocacy agencies that write orders for protection, provide other resources and things like that. But typically, if somebody is connected to them first, they typically refer back to us. But those agencies, their focus is on intimate partner bodies. So that, that's what's hard, is that people are like, well, where do I call? Like, well, that's.
So you're saying, very familiar with your services.
And if I could tell you from my perspective what happens with those cases, I'll use the parent-child relationship. They reach out to my office, my office will tell them when the upcoming court dates are so they can attend and they can talk to me or whatever prosecutor from my office is there at that hearing, and then they get their input that way. So it's satisfying the requirements of state law for crime victim rights, but it's not, we're not obviously able to provide services beyond that.
I mean, in that kind of scenario, the words of parent-child on CPS, do you involve?
These are adults.
And then the, this funding that you're seeking, are you seeking that to replace that staff member that you had to cut?
That would be, yeah. That would be the ultimate goal. You know, we always get X amount for general operating funds and so then we have to decide where that money goes and actually that, those conversations are going to be starting here now. That's my ultimate goal, is I would like to get that full-time staff member back. That'll be a discussion depending on how all of these conversations go with all the different communities and what that looks like going forward for the communities that are supporting our services and those that aren't able to. Those will also have to be conversations we need to have. But yeah, that was, that would definitely be the goal, is to bring back another staff member if at all possible.
And from your point of view, you treat that protected conversation as a pretty important piece?
It's very important. And I would say beyond that, the services that Tubman can provide, that my office just can, is critical for these organizations. For what it's worth, I 100% support what you're asking for, if the city can afford to do that.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I just.
On the balance?
I, I see this being compared to NYFS, where we come into doing the, the, the youth that have the issues with family members or, or can't control themselves with their anger issues or mental health issues or, or something. And I see how much we support NYFS and making sure that those young people get what they need. This is on a totally different level of things that we need to help. Any one of us in this room could have it happen and would need these services that this group can offer. I've had a close friend that had to go through all of this. It's not an easy process to sit there all day down at the courthouse waiting for your name to be called so you could take a piece of paper in and sit down with somebody else and say, yeah, oh, you need to have this filled, you gotta go back out, fill this out again, do that, go back in, talk to that person, and then you'll say, we'll get back to you. In the meantime, the abuser is out there somewhere. It was very scary. So if we can do this, I'm all for supporting this program. I have used your services, I am not ashamed to say that. So I am 150% in favor. And it was an older child. I know the Monty Police Department has been to my house many times. What you provide is so crucial, even for me, it was very crucial. So please, please, if you can, go for it, guys, go for it.
Jen, you mentioned you have a similar relationship already with Badness Heights. Are there any other Ramsey County communities that you have that relationship that you're looking for with us? And if they have, what Badness Heights' contribution is to your organization?
So Falcon Heights is the one that's for this year. So many heights, yeah. So Falcon Heights is this year, they have, you know, obviously a much smaller number of cases, it's a smaller city and, and so I believe their contribution this year is $5,000. And that's based also on their level of services and number of community members that we serve. We've also met with Badness Heights, my understanding that their council has approved for 2024. I believe we were asking for 14 from their community based on, again, the number of services. I guess that's what we had to come up with, is some kind of formula that seemed to make sense based on, you know, the number of services that we provide in any given city. That seemed to be the, what worked the best.
Looking at your financial pie charts, you know, there is mental health listed. Exactly what, what does that mean for you guys? Because as Sheri mentioned, we do have a relationship with a nonprofit mental health organization and hopefully you've heard what these, the type of services and maybe even interact with them on the future. But what do your services be different than what they are providing? Because I have this view, they are families and.
Yeah. I would say this is quite a bit different because it's all about the court, court system. So that's really what our focus is. And even though we refer to other programs within Tubman, we do have some clinical services, some of those are by fees or by insurance and things like that, but we have some chemical health, individual support, individual counseling and support groups. So we would refer folks to that if they're interested on top of the legal advocacy services. So this is more about court processes and reporting victim survivors through those processes, civil and criminal.
Mark, I'm guessing we could find $25,000 around present 2023, don't you think?
If that's your priority, yes.
I definitely agree with Sheri and Teresa that we've had this long-term relationship that provides valuable services to the police department, to the unfortunate individuals that the police department has to interact with and the valuable service that Tubman brings. And Zach, I don't know where you're at.
Well, I think with the being, I think that you guys do valuable work, did some research and looking at what you can do. I personally think being halfway through the year, that I would be much more comfortable with $10,000 this year. And, you know, looking at what maybe a go-forward contribution would be next year, knowing that we're looking at a budget that's facing a significant increase, that's where I'm at with it.
I think the thing is, what they're asking is they've already provided services to our community, to the police department, without seeing financial reimbursements. So, you know, some of our payments that bit here. Yes, my understanding of our.
Check with the city attorney to make sure that the contract is, meets all the purpose and that we can retroactively pay for it as a consequence of the list from the act of that year with the full contract as a bonus.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is at least consensus from the staff to move forward to the next step of working with our attorney and moving into a contract.
So I'm going to summarize this clear for this year. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, you just want to let me know what you need or anything.
You determine you're only over your two grounds.
Okay.
We're not, we're not agreeing, save money in the end, we're saving the viewers.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
You're ready.
The next item on the agenda is CPY, the New York Police for Youth fiscal request. And our representation of CPY.
So council just finally, refreshing, and you heard the previous workshop on.
Re-request.
Just consideration how CPY and NSC and the director's staff have something on CPY from that and more research on NSC. So you're also very familiar with CPY and first and most of all, just to try to talk to Mike about it.
Well, it was a pleasure for me, I think, last year, but it's kind of the first time we came in.
With introductions.
Oh, sorry. My name is Mary Stewart and my name's advocate director.
Yep, and I'm Brian Wade, I'm the board chair of CPY.
Go ahead, Sheri. More enjoy.
Absolutely. So we are, I think many of you are aware of this, that we currently service youth in Brighton and Ramsey and a little bit in Oregon Hills. And we've been around for 26 years providing out-of-school care for children. So anytime that school is out, then CPY is usually in session providing care. But we are, when CPY was first originally created, it was created to help reduce the juvenile, growing juvenile crime in the area. And, and we have worked in partnership specifically with the city of Brighton to do just that and have been successful like that and continue to do so. And over the years, we have involved more kids from Monty into our programming. And so we have kids from kindergarten through eighth grade and we really work with families that don't have the means to pay for programming, you know, other options that are available. And for most middle schools, most school students, no other options are available. And so this is where CPY comes in to fill that gap. And just really after coming after Tubman, I just couldn't help thinking about, you know, we are really a preventative program. We are trying to prevent, you know, our kids from creating into those issues that Tubman is having to deal with or NYFS. And so we are here to not only educate our youth, but really to work on the social, emotional aspects and helping them with relationships and their peers, as well as helping families in their situations, providing much-needed care. providing much-needed care so that they can continue to work and continue to provide for their families. And so in the summer, we have a quite extensive program that actually is housed here in Montsue at a by end of year, as well as our elementary program that's coming up here and our medical program down in Leighton. And so we are in person in Montsue and have been so for several years. And we currently have a contract. And I think, I don't know, Niall, does everybody have a copy or seen the contract?
I didn't include the copy you have with Leighton, but they're familiar, so it's a little bit of a contract that we have with NYFS.
Okay.
Contract.
Yeah, yeah. So we are in contract with Leighton and have been for multiple years. And we continue to service Montsue kids. And I think there's a greater opportunity for sure there, but we are just limited in the resources that we have to be able to do so.
Mary, what I did include is perhaps you can explain, this is in the package, so you can explain that you're owed there.
Okay, sure. Yep. So this is kind of a breakdown of how many kids that we have served in Montsue in twenty, 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 twenty-one, and twenty, twenty-two. As you can see, first of all, eighty-nine percent of the kids are on group re-raise lunch. And so total, we served in twenty, twenty-two, last year was four hundred and eighty-seven. Of that, seventy-two were from Montsue. And so each year, we, we take on quite a few youth from Montsue. And we would love to do more, but we are just kind of, again, limited in those resources. When we, when COVID happened and we created our distance learning center, where we basically opened up a new school to keep kids in school and schools shut down on the days that they weren't going to school, half of those youth were specifically from Montsue. And so we get referrals from the schools to let us know what families are most in need. And then we get to kind of a point where, you know, we have to turn some way.
If I could just for quick sec to add to that. And so Mary, I think, I think Mary kind of downplays like, oh, we opened the distance learning center when COVID hit. This was something that occurred with no prior planning on our part, on the board's part or CPY's part. To kind of, just, I want to highlight this story because it talks about the resourcefulness and the effect that CPY has. I mean, how many kids were served in whole?
A hundred and thirty-five.
A hundred and thirty-five kids. So these were a hundred and thirty-five kids that when COVID hit, were, they lost, right? I mean, their parents are working, they have no good resources to get connected to school. They have no good resources to turn in, to make sure they're turning in their assignments, that they're making the progress that they needed to make over those two years that COVID really threw people out of school. And completely de-no ball, you know, from the ground up, CPY said, okay, we're going to set this up and take care of our kids. We're going to make sure they're turning in their assignments. And you know, all these stories of kids being twenty, thirty, forty assignments behind and, you know, done, right? Like that's, it missed most of the school year. You know, CPY helped and guided those kids, get them back up to speed, get them to where all their assignments are turned in. And they're getting the grades they need to, they're getting the education they need to. And so half of those being Montsue kids, and you think that's sixty-five odd Montsue kids that went left behind because of CPY.
Well, not only that, I mean, the COVID fallout, we were seeing a lot of social and emotional struggles. And you could talk to the schools and hear how, you know, the last two years, it's just been so rough. And this is why CPY is important to help these kids deal with these issues and help them be successful and stay in school and stay out of trouble and just be headed in the right direction and have the support that they need.
Council questions for Mary or Brian?
Well, I have, I have a connection. I have actually done some career nights that they have held. And they, it's, the kids get a sheet with questions on it. I have to go around to each table and ask each question. But when they come, they have their own sort of sessions. And I have to admit, these kids are, they've got it going. And, and the questions that they were asking were ones that, I guess I was surprised by. You know, that they were really interested in what the careers were that were around at the table. But to see these kids at this program and what they're all doing and learning how to cook and learning how to do their homework and learning how to respect each other and learning what opportunities are out there for them. It's another very worthwhile program that we have for our young people in this town. Thank you.
Where does your funding come from now?
Kind of a big monthly fund. We're probably most heavily on grants, which, as you know, that's a virtue and is challenging. But, you know, right now, we do focus on a lot of career things. So that is kind of a topic right now among the grants. But as soon as it changes, that drastically changes our funding, you know. As you know, our fees are, I think last year we had five thousand dollars in fees per day. So that's not a large sort of income. Both churches allow us the space for free, which saves us a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. But, and then we do a lot of fundraising events and, you know, anything that we can to provide the funds. But it hasn't been easy and it continues to, to be a struggle. And unfortunately, we've kind of hit points where we've just said, you know, like, we can't take that in one use because we just don't have the resources.
You were saying that you do, I kind of just wrote down scholarships for programs if you're, if you're helping kids. That's your program that you're talking about?
For after-school eye in summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would say we got, we do have some pretty strong relationships with some local businesses around Leighton, Montsue community. We also, a big, kind of a big turning point was up until about a handful of years ago. With COVID, it's like a little close, five, six years ago, I don't know. Up until about five, six years ago, we had a pretty strong relationship with the Montsue School District as well. Medicine's been, that, that has changed. And that's kind of what prompted us to actually go back to the city and reevaluate, the city in Brighton at the time, kind of reevaluate your contract with the city in Brighton. You know, because I think similarly, they have the understanding that it hurts during a lot of kids in that particular neighborhood. And so we kind of revisited the contract at that time and just kind of made sure we said, you know, what the government is in Montsue, it's here, it's probably kind of...
So I see the COVID numbers on here at one fifty-three, one eighty-one for Montsue kids. And then I see a big fallout to seventy-two and twenty-two, and things are kind of return to normal. So what were the, you know, prior to COVID, how many Montsue kids were reserving?
You know, to give you an exact answer, I'd have to go back and look. I can certainly provide that to you. I don't, I don't want to just speak without, you know what I mean, give you an accurate detail. But I'd be happy to have that to me, sure.
What's the Leighton contract amount?
We're currently at sixty-seven five.
What was the raise that you gave on the share of the luncheon?
Oh, at the luncheon, oh, it was twelve.
So what are you looking for for the city of Montsue financially?
Yeah. Well, we know currently right now, I can't even, I can't see the, like, what it costs currently to have seven, two kids in program. It's about a hundred and four thousand dollars. I'm not asking for that. But it's about fourteen hundred fifty dollars per child is what our actual costs are for programming. And so, you know, we, even ten percent of, of that number would be helpful in, you know, helping support these kids. And like I said, I know that there are more kids in the area, you know, kind, kind of ready to have a start and after-school program, full-fledged at about the mid-year. Because around, during the school year, we actually have to go and pick a block from the schools in Boston to Leighton. And we are getting maxed out at that facility and just don't, you know, have the means. But to do that, we need to be financially able to sustain that program and to keep it going.
Have you had conversations with the school district or the school board recently?
It's been a little bit, but we've met with our team and the superintendent. And they had, we used to receive funds through the EPS program. And so they can redefine that hole at the state level. And so we were no longer access to those funds because of how they redefine them. However, we continue to work. And I would say if you talk to the schools, they are very much supportive of CPY and what we do. And, and we're like heavily, not only through COVID, but since to help mitigate, you know, and help these families that are struggling and there are many that are struggling.
Mark, when do we, how much does our charitable gambling fund generate over a course of the year?
It can vary, but I would say a hundred and six and nine thousand.
Because I know one of the contributions that we made is CPY, last year, I believe, was, came out of that fund. And that fund, we can make those types of contributions to a nonprofit like CPY. Whereas when you get into the, our general fund revenue is, aren't there some restrictions by state statute because you're using public money?
It has to be contractual in relationship, you can't donate.
So you then have a separate contract with the creator, and if you do, that's what you're, for your...
Yeah, same recommendation, make sure it's got, and that's for public purpose.
So Mary, you said ten percent, to me, that's like ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
My math is correct. Counsel, what do you think? Thoughts? Zach?
I'd be more in mind with just sticking with the general contributions. And that's not money that has to come out of the general fund. So I don't, we're already talking about taking just that one contract today with financial...
Sherry and Theresa?
I go along with the charitable gambling money. Yeah, I don't have any problem with charitable, charitable gambling money. It dedicated to CPY.
Yeah.
And I feel, I think we're kind of seeking for an ongoing relationship. And so that was kind of part of our, our requests and kind of the interest in a contractual just for an ongoing to kind of plan and, you know, be able to budget and to, you know.
Well, we'd be under contract with you guys.
You, you wouldn't do a contract, you could certainly, you wouldn't adopt the resolution directly.
Yeah, but wouldn't they need a contract because of the charitable gambling money?
fluctuates a little bit, but it's actually an eight or nine every year.
The first year was five, the next year it was about sixty-five hundred, this year it's a little higher.
Yeah, I'm recording. Okay, one point six million they took in, and then about two hundred and thirty-two thousand they distributed across the entire area of one site. Those are probably more money to operate, most of its prices were both three hundred and prices. So we wouldn't need a contract if you're not...
Well, would this be a possibility? Or there is a contractual agreement up to ten thousand, but the source of the combination, general payment and the balance coming from general fund?
Special project?
Or you do, yeah, a contract, you just pledge it forth for that contractual, you just, for a vice person, if there's a general fund.
Well, then at that point, I would want to go fifteen.
Fifteen thousand? So I have a lot of consensus. I have consensus, just not in the law.
I, I think at the end of the day, I mean, CPY would appreciate any amount of support that, that the city is willing to, you know, to help contribute to helping take care of the, of the city of Montsue. And it might be a, a, to start looking, you know, hey, you know, to start building this relationship and saying, you know, we're always more than happy to come around.
Did you guys talk to the Leighton Lions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think I am hearing consensus, it was considered a contract. Something I haven't heard yet is, do you potentially know of that? Do you actually have a contract? There's a, throughout fifteen, Mary's looking for ten, at least.
So it's a consensus for a contract with X.
Correct.
So it might make sense for us to go back and just take a second to reevaluate the amount of, so we can go back and look at the city of Brighton contract and have to actually get a little bit better sense of the, the support per child for the city of Brighton, and maybe that's the issue.
We're in a little bit different scenario in the city of Brighton, where it comes to letting you pop. We have a city charter that has a limitation on what we can actually let in. Leighton does not, council does not have that limitation, other than certain enough. So I think it'd be, I think it'd be helpful to somehow, the relationship with school district could be reestablished. I mean, when I'm here and considered, I would like you to do this, well, I would as part of the school district.
Would this be above and beyond the YMCA that's a daycare?
Well, yeah, but a lot of our families just can't afford that.
Right.
Yeah, it's really certainly no family that can afford those things.
Easier for their kids to get over it. I'm sure part of the busing is an issue with the school district.
Well, we have a bus, so we're busing and we're moving that as well.
Mary, what is your staffing, some church staff in your house?
Yeah, so we're just gearing up for summer. So right now, we have sixteen for our summer program. We really need two more. So if anybody's looking for a job this summer, we have some availability. But, yeah, we usually in the summer are eighteen to twenty.
Most of the full-time staffs.
Full-time staffs, so we have four of us that are full-time now.
So I'm not clear for the consensus of...
I am very consensus about that part, but I'm, I'm very, because the X amount.
Well, the X amount is giving, don't you, I... I'm clear.
Mary and Brian, thank you for coming. The next item on the agenda is RAP Association's file.
Counsel, two of you are familiar with Todd Stone, co-organization of RAP, you would say personally, that is correct. And this is related to the community center, which is related to navigating the space that you can operate in and it's specific to public dollars and education versus advocacy. And we became familiar with RAP Strategies when we did our group meeting with Maple Grove. They recommended them. Hecking near the house and, also, Ron and I met the, assumed meeting just to get an idea. And the three of them said, yes, so let's have Todd come to your meeting tonight. So Sharon, what it is, they can do it for your consideration. Any further introductions, Todd Stone from RAP Strategies?
Welcome, Todd.
Thank you, it's good to be here. Just briefly, I'm Todd Stone and the managing director of RAP Strategies. RAP Strategies is a strategic communications firm that's been around for almost forty years under a couple of different names. It's been RAP Strategies for... Under a couple of different names, it's been RAP Strategies for about the past seven years. I've been with the firm for the last five and I wear a handful of hats, but one of the bigger hats I wear is referendum work. Uh, I work with the school districts, counties and cities on various referendum initiatives of of communications for either a school district seeking operating, operating levy or a building bond referendum or a city or county seeking a sales tax approval to support a community project. Um, most recently is, or how to say, I, uh, I was, uh, I took the lead on communications for Maple Grove and Adana on a successful referendum member as well as Tasker County. And, um, just good to be here. Uh, one of the things, uh, you know, we've been working with, uh, I would say jurisdictions for on the referendum for more than a dozen years now. Eighty-nine questions with, uh, uh, on behalf of jurisdictions across the state, sixty-four have been successful. And, uh, we've learned a lot from going through all that referendum, how to effectively communicate and help, uh, whether it's a school district, county or city, effectively communicate their plan, information about the plan so that their voters, their residents can make an informed vote about the project and whether it's the right time for them. And that's, that's what we specialize in. We're on the information side of these communication efforts. There's a, there's, there's a place for advocacy, for vote yes. Uh, that's not what we do. We help local governments, um, communicate and get good information out in a way that, um, again, can help with that informed vote. See if anyone has any questions.
Questions?
So typically at what point in the process do you get involved?
We've, uh, uh, we always like to get involved in the processes early as possible. With Maple Grove, we started working with them about thirteen, about twelve months before, uh, uh, election day in November twenty twenty-two. Uh, but sometimes we've been brought in as late as three weeks before, uh, early voting begins. I don't recommend that strategy, but if you're just starting to want to ramp up information for your constituents. Uh, but traditionally about where we're at right now, about, uh, four or five months before, uh, early voting begins is often when we get brought in and start helping with ramp up communications.
Okay.
Good. So when you say communications, can you give us some examples of what that would look like, sure, like?
Well, one of the things we, when we talked about this, uh, when we met, is, uh, one of the foundational communication tools we think you need during a referendum is an independent microsite to serve as a one-stop information portal about everything going on with your plan and the referendum. It's one place that you can always get constituents to learn more about the plan, the cost and tax impact. That's important to state statutes clear, you think that you think, uh, the local government can invest resources to inform its constituents about a plan, as long as you're talking about all aspects of, uh, the process for the the plan's development, the cost, the tax impact, the benefits, you can talk about that. Of course, voting information is really probably important, but when you start thinking about all that information, all the the background, the resources, the process that led you here, all the public documentation, uh, that that's been created along the way. If you have a microsite, that's a good house, housing place, it's great, all that good library that you can refer residents to. Again, that one-stop shopping, we start there. Uh, then we work with, it, it, basically depending on the government, we work with them on and understanding what their capacity is in terms of communications, what they already do well, the tools they use to reach their residents with good information. And then we work with them to figure out how we can help, uh, intensify those communications regarding referendum. And that can include everything from developing, um, uh, social media to, uh, developing video. We, uh, we very successful on the Tasker County, we built a radio, a series of radio PSA ads that just to inform residents, cause we felt like, uh, just social media goes along, wasn't going to reach everyone in a, in a rural county. And, um, so we, so we tend to think of communications based on the market in, in terms of what the community is, in terms of how to most effectively communicate, but some of those tools are the microsite. Uh, guest columns for the local newspaper will help, uh, put together on behalf of local, um, leaders. We'll also work with city staff and elected leaders about, um, uh, how to effectively talk about the project in a, in a way that they're comfortable with. And, uh, we can give them good, clear messaging that explains the project effectively is really important. Cause that's really what we're talking about here, is effectively explain the project, why we're here, what the voters are going to be concerned. But those are some of the tools in the end of the box for sure.
So one of the other questions I had for you here too, so you said about five months, you're talking about November this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
As I said, brief that communication is planning, uh, twelve, thirteen months long. Uh, we, with, uh, Maple Grove is about thirteen months with, uh, Adina, we've worked with them, sorry, about ten months out.
Did you work with Litchfield?
We did, we worked with Litchfield on, um, their sales tax.
All right. They didn't get that direct?
No, and that it, it was a really unique situation where you had one.
And they ran it twice, didn't they?
Yeah, you had one community project, uh, that had, uh, that was going to be supported part of it by property taxes through school referendum. And the part that was going to be, uh, supported by the sales tax, um, for the city pub. So it was just a, you know, it's an interesting contrast. That was one I'd never been seeing before.
Counsel, I'm just gonna add in, in the conversation we shared, you know, that we'd done a number of things and one more thing we did a lot of minutes, so I would have been recommending that. And so that's a plus that we're out of the in process. I made a note because I didn't get around to the state just to get an update from other where they're at and, uh, like, they're actively serving, it's been where they're at there. And then the fact that we've, uh, also been on, um, two communications, so some of that's out there. There is no staff capacity, either expertise or time, getting nice started on a microsite. We can do it. It'll be less than professional as compared to having, uh, half strategy. We just need to have that expertise. We got the ability. I did spend time in and it put a close to hundred photographs, you know, on, yeah, outside of building in two different light settings. And I also took a set back in April and we can do another set inside, just so we can do those types of things. And just, um, the manager made room with her, I D Nelson. Todd allowed off the, uh, the course of those weekly meetings. She said she handed them, uh, she thought it'd be one of the most important things. That office, that contract and the creation of communication work life was something else that we don't have the expertise. I think you shared in that meeting, you were a hundred percent on sales tax.
Yeah, yeah, yes, we are, uh, doing that. Well, first, uh, sales tax referendum project was with Al River back in twenty eighteen. And, uh, but through this November, we are stacking a thousand.
And then the other thing that he recommended, we get the PAX analysis plan for the university. So they said that's already in process, so we're already, and that's due, you know, later. And when their contracts are made for, which I thought was laughable, obviously, which is probably what I'm looking for. And so for those in the audience, the PAX consequence is what percentage of the sales tax will be paid for by residents versus non-residents? And, uh, you gotta be open to the data, it's like being with Georgia, non-residents, cause a lot of the sales tax, forty percent is coming out of the industrial parks. Unless our residents are buying half million dollar machines in industrial park, they, um, they're going to be on the side of our, our, and our tax. But we'll know more when that study comes in. So what staff is looking for, if you wanted to engage some consensus to prepare you have a standard contract?
Yeah.
So what we're going to have on the twelve, three, consider?
But Todd, well, so you've got a hundred percent success rate, what would you say in the key items to that, to that success rate? Uh, so you're talking about communication already.
Well, part of the main plan, and I think one of the things that stands out is, is we put our, the local government we're working with in the best position possible to answer questions quickly. I think from what I've experienced in my five years is I think when good plans fail, they most often fail not because they're bad plans or that there was necessarily that they vote no opposition. It's sometimes it just questions weren't answered, weren't, weren't answered in a timely way. If, uh, if I have a question, and I don't really understand, I don't know where to go to get these answers. I'm going to go to someone else who's initially the expert of the cities. And what happens in that gap is misinformation. I think we're talking to the pastor, a bunch of, who are very good people, I'm sure, but they don't understand the, the institution of policy, how it's being applied from a pay grade. We develop a work plan to direct those questions to the city where you can deliver, and puts you in the best position to deliver good fact-based information. And when, when referendums succeed, almost always, that has been happening very effectively. And, um, and so that's, that's what we really focus on, getting questions answered.
And then with respect to, Councilman Lindstrom's comment about in November. So at the end of sessions, these bills all came through, the House didn't hear any bills, the Senate turned them all. The Congress committee picked them all up and they got passed and adopted for the Congress committee, signed by the governor. But included in the language is they put a two-year moratorium, so there won't be any bills being able to introduce next year at all. There also, it wasn't a dispute, it was a question that the media's working to answer while some other parties on, it says general election, and so then everything's by definition, well, it's the November election, the general election. Our attorney has said, just in a verbal opinion, anytime you have an election where your whole general population is voting, that's a general election. But we're still waiting for it. Clearance or clarification on that, so it's still playing in our attorney's case, we can put it on the, on the, on the.
No, you should be a butcher. How much is the contract?
I gotta check to you.
How much is the contract?
It was, uh, the scope of services we presented, uh, it's, uh, it's be thirty thousand dollars. But it would be five thousand dollars a month, depending on when the contract starts.
Eight hundred and fifty-six. True. You know what, it sounds, it, I look at this as another tool that we can use. And I know residents, you know, they, they come and ask the questions and they ask each one of us the same question and could probably get a different answer from each one of us. To have a central spot that works, that people can connect with and get all the information that they hopefully need. And then to go from there with further questions to staff to find out more. But we have run into this before in, in other projects and stuff, is, is to give the right information out, the correct information out there and that we're all giving out the same information. So having that central spot is crucial to.
The webpage is still on.
Eight girls.
Oh, yeah, one of the, yeah, well, one of the things we recommend is when we do a referendum microsite, it's assuming you go through election and it passes, let that referendum, um, microsite become your project microsite where people can keep going back to learn more about the project as it moves forward. But yeah, to your point, one of the first things we do is we develop what we just loosely call a core messaging document, which basically is we try to find the simplest language to describe all those elements of the project that, uh, then we can use going forward for any communications materials. So you can have that clear, consistent description of the work and the process of the call.
And an easier spot to navigate versus our city website? That you can have a few issues and trying to get the information that you need and want?
And it's just when you're on a, your city website, uh, no matter what quality it may be, there's a lot of competing information.
Yes.
There's a lot of good information, but it's competing. We want to give residents one place to go for justice questions. And for the community question, it's a big decision, give them that one place to go, let them get their questions answered.
This is, I have your thoughts as far as a contract.
I don't have more, I don't consideration. I don't have problems with a contract, as a matter of fact, I would prefer a contract.
I, I don't see spending any more money on this project at this point until we know what the survey results are. And we spent a good amount of money on that survey and it hasn't yet. Another financial commitment, prior to even knowing what the results are, does it seem that, uh, responsible can be given, I mean?
Well, not to do it right now, but it's a tool that we've got available for us.
Well, if we make any sense, this is going to be at the meeting in Monday and then we're going to have to vote on contract and we don't have the survey results. And I'm not confident doing that.
It should be close to being done with the survey.
I guess.
So maybe a month later. Cause I think you said four weeks to do it.
Well, it doesn't have to be on our next agenda, correct?
No, it'll be at the end of the month. That leaves you a lot of this September. Well, we're probably.
You lose two weeks, the twelfth to the twenty-sixth.
What's the rear results by the twenty-sixth?
Well, I guess I contemplated this survey too. I think the survey, uh, provides more guidance, so if, if it's, I don't think you might see a survey that's eighty-four to eighty-twenty-four or eighty-twenty, yes, it's definitely sixty-four to fifty-five, forty-five. And so if it's fifty-five, forty-five opposed, then you got work to do. If it's fifty-five, forty-five or forty, it's not work to do.
Take that to the bank. Maple, what are most of these?
They're fifty-five, forty-five to sixty-four. Yeah, Maple Grove was, uh, fifty-four to forty-five. The Diana, its first question was a little higher, it's fifty-eight, forty-two, and then the second question, the February part was like, uh, fifty-four, fifty-three. Um, no, we've never, uh, we, even when we're succeeding, there's, we've never won by a hundred percent. So, uh, that doesn't happen. Uh, but yes, I think it's great that you're doing that survey research, if it can inform your, your messaging. Not only does it just give you that, you know, would you favor it or would you oppose it? But hopefully there's a subset of questions, uh, where you're learning more about, uh, whether confusion might be. You can identify, uh, what the priorities are, and then that can help you communicate more effectively. So it's going to be a great tool, remember, uh, whether you use us or not, it's going to give information beyond just that.
Yes, no questions.
So, Paul, I don't know that matters much, I'll do, uh, Paul, if it gets twenty-six, I just, I don't know with the surveys. So it's, it's clear, just we got.
Well, I would like to look through the survey.
I'm hearing consensus, I'm looking for the survey, it's twenty-six.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I have a work of deals. Thank you.
Mr. President, just your acting there. I know you don't need to, I'm in a position, but we do have another gap. And you have the next type of activity, so be so kind as to.
Like by your office, sure. Sam, we're moving up.
All right.
City after us.
Want me right here?
Where?
So we're jumping to item number five on the agenda that organized solid waste.
And so, Counsel, what we want to do here, this is your last book session before your meeting. With the haulers on the twenty-sixth. And we did have a conference call, we had some, it was, you were there. Sam, for each other. Just us?
No, I was there too.
You were there? It's awful. Uh, but I think it's important, all we did, we came in, was what's going to happen that night, what's, where we're at on that. By way of an update, uh, we hope to have the survey launched, they have, I'm very confident it'll be launched tomorrow, just.
Oh, so it, it hasn't yet?
No, it's, the means are, we're supposed to be out on there, so it's, it'll be up until the twenty-second, but it's more important than. Not the time, details, uh, it's close to Christmas, again, we'll be talking, we'll see if we're in to. We'll be talking, we'll see if we're going to allow it to be in multiple households, or more than one person in a household. So we got that verified, so you can go and enter multiple from the same household, so it'll track how many come from that household. That, if you want to throw in those other two, if you were taking, just working towards on contract part-time, these are the full times, again, just kind of count, make his schedule. Look for that to be launched, and it'll be known stuff on the webpage, so people are going to learn, so we'll all, we'll put it on the social media. But on the, on the twenty-sixth, let Sam particularly make this further. This, it is a council meeting, it's not a public hearing, it's meeting the statutory requirements that the haulers advocate for and put in place for you to have a discussion now. And so like, Sam, particularly Laura, you will have Sam and Rachel. Sam, not Rachel, but most of you, so you introduce yourself, your background in organized solid waste collection.
Sure, yeah, so my name's Sam Ketchum, I'm an attorney at Kennedy Grayland, so I work with Scott, the city attorney. And I've been working with Niall and staff, and Ag Mayor, Councilwoman Gunn, Organized Collection for a couple of months now. And Rachel and I were at the public engagement sessions recently as well. My background with Organized Collection is that I've worked with a number of cities that have gone through this process, both cities that have had it for a long time, like Maplewood, I've worked with other cities that have a different kind of collection system. And then my main experience has been working with the city of Richfield, kind of start to finish, getting through this process. Rachel was the city attorney in St. Paul, so they also went through this process, and we both can have more experience from working with those two cities. So, yeah, as Niall said, the meet and confer is, kind of here that, meeting on the twenty-sixth referred to as, now attorney just needs to meet with the haulers and discuss some specific issues to kind of set sort of the priorities for negotiating the contract for organized collection. So there's some specific things that you, that I think you kind of have to talk to the haulers about. But it's really anything related to organized collection, the statute specifically says road deterioration, which you can hear a lot about, public safety, pricing mechanisms, and then the last one is contractual considerations you need to organize collections. So very, very broad, but essentially, we just have to have a conversation with the haulers about the city's priorities. So that's about it. There'll be a public hearing later on, and not like when we get more into that process.
So talk about the process after that, which are what these states do.
Yeah, so there's a specific negotiation period with the haulers that, where the statute has to be sixty days. The city can extend it, extend that period of time if it wants. You know, I think in Richfield, I want to say it maybe took two or three months, so a little over sixty days. I know St. Paul had, I think, like twenty, I can't remember, I've surveyed them out, but they had twenty-some haulers, so it took a lot longer to get through that negotiation process. But after that sixty-day period, if the city reaches a deal with the haulers, we come back and the council approves, you know, a contract with the, with the haulers. There'd have to be a public hearing, it's also a requirement in the state law. If there is no deal reached with the haulers, there's this committee that has to be created, and the city's gonna have some other options on how to deal with that. One of the options is potentially going to, you know, RFP for single haulers. So it's a long, complicated process, and, you know, we're kind of at the start of it, we have some public engagement with the community last week, I think. And the next step is that, that meeting confer. So that's, yeah, that's kind of the the general overview, I can answer any other questions you might have, but.
I'm gonna add a little bit more. And the survey will self-tape, we'll close it on that Friday, but that'll be the information you share with the haulers in the meeting of negotiations, because that has all of the services, and level services, and so we'll be able to convey that to the residents. One of the things that's come up is the definition of covers, it's up to fourplexes, and so took some time this morning and roam around. And we've got one council member that lives in a fourplex unit, we'll have to have more discussion on that, because the, the end goal is to have garbage in a garbage container. And some of the fourplexes may not have room for toders, and then you get toorder sharing issues. And it's roam around, and over those fourplexes, most of them had dumpsters, and no apparent garbage on the ground anywhere. And then there were toders for recycling, so that's just something we need to discuss further as we move forward. There's a way to do that, did go through one of the mobile parks, and it looks like that mobile park, well, if they did, they, they kind of, the park, it was Republican, they're kept at the other parks in the state, they're captured in this, you know, discussion, and so we'll just have to be aware of that too. So I'm going in, you know, I want to stand for the afternoon, so we can all ask questions about that night, understand the process is closed from there, what's gonna happen. It's not an ideal setting, but I envision setting up, we have six haulers, they've all been invited, we are not aware of, we're not having any contracts with their license, but all access to your, so if they have our care, we're just going to be, it's kind of, you know, they're going to work, they're all, they're in that level. So you can leave it for, again, this is their statutory requirement for them to share with you, so they're going to share their concerns with you. And some of them may say yes for organizing, some of them may say no, why, that's part of the process.
So that, that's our first step, this is our first, this is our first opportunity us to talk with.
Your, your first step was sending the official notice, and that's been conveyed.
But I mean, to talk with them, this is our first time talking with them, and we have to do this before we can get to the point of saying, during the negotiations of, you know, well, how much are you going to charge, nope, that's highway money.
The next step is you're required to establish that exclusive negotiation period, that's the next step after this. So you can do that that night. Can we do the, do we establish exclusively exclusive that night, or do we?
Um, so what Rachel and I have talked about is that it would be helpful to actually just set, to have, go through that meeting confer, and then at the next council meeting, set a resolution that kind of starts that process, and then also gives you, you know, give the council ability to kind of say, this is what we're kind of looking for, basically like a term sheet.
The resolution will have all of the things you're looking for.
Right, I mean.
In the long resolution.
Yeah, so I can say, like, from Richfield, Richfield had a much more informal kind of priority setting process. They just had staff come up with like a term sheet. You could do that, what Rachel and I are kind of recommending is have a resolution that starts that sixty-day negotiation period, and then kind of outlines some of the council's priorities for, for that negotiation.
So just to kind of walk through the timeline, survey closes the twenty-second, the twenty-sixth, we have the meeting with the haulers. Then the following council meeting on the sixth is where we would have the resident resolution outlining what we want. Eighth, I'm sorry, no, we have seven.
July eight.
Twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, ten, yeah.
Ten.
It's on the wrong one. So July tenth, then we would have the resolution outlining what we wanted.
Yeah.
And then sixty days from that point, they would come back, that's when the public hearing would be, and that would be the vote to move forward, roughly.
Roughly, yeah, so it's going to depend on how long this takes. I mean, you know, when I was working with Richfield, I think we basically had like a weekly meeting where we just kind of were going down the line on different issues and negotiating them. So, but generally speaking, yes, it's just that it's, it's, it's going to depend on how long those negotiations with the haulers take.
And did those negotiations, do they happen at the council meetings, or how does that look?
In, in Richfield, how it looked was we just had, and this was actually, I think, spring, kind of twenty-one, so it was just virtual meetings with them. I would imagine it'd be the same thing, just my council meeting, basically staff and Rachel or I probably.
They'll, they'll be sharing potential trade secrets, so they're, they're not going to want that. But if we extend, we have to do that at the council meeting, we extend sixty days, or I just keep reporting back.
I have a good question, I honestly don't, I don't think we had a specific extension in Richfield, and I can't remember how long it exactly.
It says at least sixty days.
Yes.
Statute says at least sixty.
But to answer your question, that's, that is kind of the general timeline, twenty-sixth is the confer.
The tenth.
Tenth would be a resolution.
Sixty-ish days later.
Your resolution's gonna be sixty days.
Well, roughly, right, sixty, ninety, whatever it is.
Correct, and then there has to be a public hearing before the council basically moves, you know, adopts organized collection, that's the garbage collection system in the city, so that public hearing would be, how we did this in Richfield was that they, the council adopted that, approved the contract with the haulers at the same meeting, they did the public hearing, got that requirement in public at the same time.
So there's at least two options, right, where the haulers come back with the contract. One is, council can vote to accept it, two, they can vote to not accept it. And then at that point, they could either say, we're done with the process, or they can, we can go, or negotiate, or, I don't know, or they can decide to form a committee.
Correct.
You'd have to form a committee if you, if you didn't want to keep going.
Correct, I think so, yes. Yeah, there's a little bit, that's part of where the state law gets a little bit unclear about exactly how that works, because it's kind of anticipating them coming to an agreement after that negotiation period, and, but essentially, if things fall apart, it has that option to start the selection, the options.
And that's a good point, Sam, that a lot of this, what we're going through, is state statute. We have to follow these rules put into state, we're not doing this on our own, this is.
You can ask questions with the haulers.
Right, and I would, I would encourage the council to think about kind of the things that go into this. I don't know if you had a chance to look at, to review the public engagement session, but at least the, the two that I was at, there was a lot of discussion about things like walk-up service or snowbird policy. So all that stuff gets negotiated as part of this, and for the council to, you know, the council can engage with the haulers at this meeting confer on the twenty-sixth and say, these are kind of our priorities, and obviously, set those priorities in our resolution too.
The survey results will be in public documents, they won't be the packets, the packets, and then we're closing it Friday, and then we'll be opening it up Monday, so that night is our hobby to share it with you.
Sam, when you say that, one of the differences between the timeline for St. Paul, which is the timeline for Richfield, or maybe a couple of reasons. One was, St. Paul was operating under the old state statute guidelines, I think, which the haulers have played, played a major role in getting changed, from what I understand. Whereas Richfield was operating under the, the current state statute guidelines, where the haulers have requested this meeting to just talk, and then, and then there's the sixty-eight process for them to determine if they're willing to work together in a consortium environment.
Correct, correct.
And if they can, if they reach agreement on a price that they want to offer to the city, which is, they can either choose to accept or not accept.
Correct, and the, I think another main, very difference of these, I think, is also just the size and the number of haulers. And in St. Paul, I think there were a lot of smaller haulers that had, you know, a few customers, it was literally like one or two people running these garbage hauling businesses, so they had, I think, I want to say twenty-three haulers at the start of that process, and they had a negotiated contract of all of them, and your city has, I think, two haulers that have most of the market for garbage, and I think six total, so.
Well, I have to look at those other two, maybe back on parts.
So you, you said that the survey closes on the twenty-second.
Whatever, right.
That'd be the twenty-third. Would there be any way to close it on the twenty-second, so we can get it in a packet? Because I don't really want to be working in on Monday, you know, negotiating with the survey.
Well, we're on Monday, so the negotiating, Zach.
While we're meeting with the haulers, probably want, the survey results are going to be imperative to that.
They'll tell it for us.
Sure. Can we get whatever we have at that, that's in the packet?
I kind of, kind of got the impression when we had the conference call here that we wouldn't necessarily talk about specific services in that meeting we, we.
Well, so I think the city can, right?
Yes. Correct, yeah, I mean, I think the city, as a council, if there's things that you really want, or things that you're really concerned about, especially based on what we've seen in the survey, you can convey that to the haulers, and obviously, that resolution of the city adopted, basically said, could, could say, we, this is what we want per lot, so we definitely want this in there. So I think you can, I don't think it's required, I mean, the specific things are, you know, road deterioration, public safety.
Without it falling under city priorities, wouldn't it?
Right, yeah, I mean, it's pretty open, but.
Right.
I mean, I guess, with my personal point of view, the twenty-sixth is just basically to say to the haulers, the city is interested in at least pursuing this potential process. We have a work session nine days later where we, where the council really talks through the survey results. And then, and be in a, in a position to then pass a resolution that would define for the haulers, this is what the city with the residents based on the survey are saying they're looking for, they want container options on trash, they want, they want composting as an option. They want organics as an option, they want walk-up service as an option. If they're going to be going on in the winter time, they're going to want to be built, because there's going to be trash recycling to pick up at their, at their home.
And I did have those questions, I mean, a city might be to do either quarterly or biyearly, just generally, I don't think, do we have those here? Put a range, just see if the haulers are just for, ultimately, they don't, you know, understand, what they're going to do.
Any further questions for Sam, for anybody? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for welcoming, we won't go any, now your time's twenty-sixth.
All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you for inviting me.
Moving back to item four, that twenty-twenty-four general question, Mark, this is yours.
Thank you, Agent Mayor. So the plan is to double the property taxes from one year to the next? Always. You're losing your.
So you know I'm all trained to call nine-one-one.
You're becoming paranoid.
Yeah. So no state levy limit in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we will continue to have the charter limit of six and a half percent. And if you wanna go higher than that, it requires a super majority of fourth fifth, so you can then go up to nine percent. Um, just some general information, the last CPI read was four point nine percent for May. Coming down, but still elevated. Uh, so all the departments have submitted their budgets, we're continuing to work on those. Since I gave you this one, we got two pieces of information from Ramsey County, one good, one bad, so. I'll share that with you as I get into that department. Um, the legislative session was concluded. Uh, a little bit of good news, LGA increased roughly about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so yay. Uh, we did get a one-time public safety grant. And once they provide the criteria for how we can spend that, they'll be back before the council to seek your uh, your uh opinion as to what you want.
Is that for mission, not permission?
Uh, it'll be coming in September, is what I heard. One time, a warning for guidelines. So you get it and spend it.
How much is it?
Five hundred and seventy-four thousand.
It's on this.
Not an incentive.
No. Uh, some of the preliminary guidelines we saw was it would be similar to the ARPA and CARES money. Where we can use a portion of public safety salaries to uh accommodate for the expenditures. Um, just general information, Ramsey County releases their property tax information in usually in early to mid-August. At that point in time, we can can do a calculation as to the impact of what any potential tax increase might have. As far as items that we need to get resolution on, uh, our two police unions have settled contracts for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. We're still negotiating with the Public Works Union. We have health insurance capped at a maximum of a twelve percent increase. We're hoping that'll be less than that, but we'll find that. We've got a mid-year review here coming up, I believe, this week. They may be able to give us an indication of where we're sitting, but typically, the rates don't come off until, you know, early to mid-September on on health insurance. Let's see, what else? Uh, city contribution towards health insurance was twelve hundred per month for twenty twenty-three. Um, our general fund assigned fund balance, everybody refers to that as the levy reduction fund. We'll have a balance of three point one million. Uh, we're planning on doing a transfer of seven hundred and fifty thousand to the street improvement fund that will help. Cash flow that as we accelerated some of the projects for, you know, an overlay and also the recompense process of sealing uh newer surfaces. You, through your strategic plan, we've been slowly reducing the amount that we're taking out of the levy reduction fund. Some of the council members may remember, we started at two hundred and fifty thousand once that fund was established. And now for twenty twenty-four, that will be down to two hundred and twenty-six thousand. The Matronic Tax Increment District will expire in twenty thirty-three, and at that point in time. Um, that tax capacity will come back on. And with the change to the charter, the council at that point in time will be able to uh exceed any levy requirement. Just to capture that additional tax capacity. It may not mean an increase in anybody's taxes, but we'll be able to capture the tax capacity that's coming online from Matronic, so. Right now, uh, we have an imbalance of about three hundred and forty-five thousand, so. A one percent lev increase would equal seven, sixty-four thousand, seven ninety-eight. Uh, you can solve that imbalance with one of three ways. You can use fund balance, you can reduce expenditures, or you can raise revenue. And the last item is preliminary levy sent to the county by September thirtieth. Typically, we'll adopt something in either late August or early September to accomplish that, so. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Acting Mayor, and however you wanna proceed in going through the draft, general budget, uh, is up to you guys.
Council, before we get into the actual detailed budget itself, is there any general questions for Mark? So Mark, it's based on a quick map of three forty-five. If that was the final number, we need to, I wonder if we're to balance that, the budget increase would be about five percent.
Low over.
Five, three, two.
Thank you.
It's actually down to five point two five because Ramsey County gave us a decrease in her dispatch fee of about ten thousand, but then they raised the uh elections contract by twenty-five percent. So that added another five thousand. Yeah.
The council, the process that past councils have used in doing this preliminary general fund is to basically do it page by page. See if there's any, any specific questions that anybody has. If not, we'll move on to the next page, so. Hopefully, we can continue that process. We can start with page one, which is the summary of the full budget. Any questions on that? Any questions on page two? Summary in a different format. How about page three? Page four? Page five is blank, so that's an easy one. Page six? Page seven?
Page six is our, again, one of the children, I need to go five.
Yeah. I have a question on page six too.
Okay.
The next line, thirty-six fifty, the donations, where does that money go to? It's at seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
That's the gateway grant.
Okay, oh, okay, okay. So that gets split between?
Festival in the park and the community center was using it for outreach for the athletic programs.
What else? Okay, on page six, and on page seven. Page eight is based, you know, changes on page eight, uh, twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-three.
I like looking at newspapers better for this.
Other than um, the major change areas are an increase in the festival of the park, budget amount, which is.
That reflects additional outreach by the police department. We have a significant presence. Police staff doing various displays and events and uh rock wall and.
Yeah.
Dogs and rescue, devils, a number of different things.
You've not seen Ace recently. Ace is notorious.
Yes.
Scary, physical specimen.
Oh, yes. I've heard him. I have not seen him.
I've not seen him for eight months.
Surprise.
Any question on page nine and ten, since they they go together?
So our elections, we have school board coming up very soon. So there will be a November election.
Yes.
Yeah.
We do have ourselves, but there'll be a special election too. And there could be sales hats.
And Mark, I guess on this one, you're going to, you've got new data since you.
That thirty-four thousand turned in about thirty-nine thousand.
Any questions on page eleven and twelve? About page thirteen and fourteen? Kind of biggest thing I'm seeing on this is uh. It's down under fifty-one hundred, which would be, that would be a um. Metro finance related cost, right, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, they're still in the process of finalizing the budgets. Are we in the last year of the legal career?
I don't know.
We're in the one more year after this.
Hey, why not a correction? It's taken out on thirty-four thirty and the packing to take out Y and C A and community center? Why? Cause we don't have the Y and C A anymore?
Yeah, sure.
Any questions on page fifteen, sixteen, still together? I did not see any, well, I see some lowering budget amounts, otherwise it's very much like last year's.
Yeah, I talked to John, we had a family committee, he lowered, wanted to increase another.
Yeah, he lowered other professional, of course, items that they had.
He was looking, and the item that now referring to is looking for some review software for plan review. That that would, that's a more of a capital purchase and that would come out of special projects. The maintenance, of course, annual maintenance would be in the general fund, but the purchase of the software would be in the special projects.
Does it relate here? I would be down in a sneak in. He's successfully written two grants. Uh, one for twenty-five thousand, he wants to use the same vendor he's using for the other, and wants to tie together, but our finance policy requires him to make a second bid. I told him to draft a resolution for the other twelve, I won't be here if you're considering. Offerings, it makes sense that you can take that one to the city. Over here.
Okay, page seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and twenty are all related to the police department.
Yeah, so a couple of things to note, it's it's pretty consistent. One thing that we did add is the uh, under thirty thirty. The CCF is Certified Crime Fighter. It's a training software program that will allow us to track all of our officers, our front staff. Training a lot better instead of using Word document or Excel spreadsheet. Um, another thing of note is, I put it on the June twenty-sixth council agenda for replacing our watch guard, our um. Our server. So we want to go from the the actual physical server.
For the cameras?
With the body cameras and squad cameras, so um, are we purchased the watch guard and the server in twenty seventeen? And it's getting to be out of date, and they're not making, the the body cameras that we're using, they're not making anymore. And they're gonna be compatible with the with the cloud, so my intention is to do all the back, behind the scenes backend stuff first. So when we do get the new body cameras, it'll be compatible with the cloud. Uh, the new body cameras will not be compatible with the physical server, which is why we gotta do all the things on the backend first. So we wanna ready to transition that, that'll be ready to go, so. That's under fifty-one hundred. I talked to Mark, it's a five-year plan. The first, the first year is twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy, and then it's annually is seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty after that for five years. And that'll come out in the special projects.
There's twenty-five thousand budgeted this year for that.
So that first year is, that first year is taken care of, um, and then even looking at that surplus for the public safety, um, the public safety grant, the. Once we get that stuff, we'll need a transfer cable or a transfer case, we'll need to update the squads, and then we'll have to get into the new body cameras. And I'm hoping to use some of that money for that, to to absorb that upon. Everything else is pretty consistent. The watch guard thing was the main thing for next year, and they gave it this year.
How about the desk, you guys, or your dogs and guys, all you have?
Yep.
Good ones there?
Yeah, we just got a, we got a grant from, we got a grant for our our canine vest, we got a canine vest, and then um, I always put it for reimbursement for the body armor as well. We're gonna start working with the churches, given that we've had a lot of retirements and people leaving and new people coming, um, as far as.
What's that program name?
Six-one-six.
Six-one-six.
So I've been talking to the North Church, the old Baptist and Baptist, and I'm working with them to figure out who still needs um, six-one-six uh here. So that's one of the things that that we're gonna, that we're gonna work with them for, so.
Does the CCF, does that become an annual maintenance process then?
Yes, yep, annual maintenance. And actually, doing some of the backend homework myself on the Mexican Health app, we went over to Sprung Park, who's using it. And I wanted to see the interseeds and see how it works, and it looks like it works really well. New Brighton just got on board. Actually, one of their sales rep and one of their, um, yeah, I guess, sales rep. So if there's any issues or problems, we can, we know where to call, so. Yeah, so, and I think it'll be. Right, right, and that's one thing I was, I was telling Mark is that, you know, the uh, I'm old school, so I like the Word document, I like the Excel spreadsheet, but. Um, it's gonna put a lot of the responsibility on the officer to make sure that they're putting in their certificates, they're getting their training. In years past, that's definitely achieved and achieved. I've been making sure that they, that that they do all that stuff. A lot of the responsibility is gonna go into them to make sure that they have everything that they need. If they don't have the required training or they're out of compliance, so to speak, uh, it'll notify me or whoever, administrators. And we're even gonna say, hey, officer so-and-so, you need such and such class, so. I think it's a better, I think I have a pretty good system as far as Word document and, like I said, old school, but I think having a software program that. Um, especially for like post reimbursement type things, it's a couple clicks and it automatically does it for you. And and all I have to do is fax it to post and then get reimbursed. Uh, I was telling Mark, years past, I've had to take two, three, four days figuring out, you know, what's their overtime rate? How many hours did they do this? And then try to figure out, um, you know, was it a bias class? Was it a use-of-force class? Cause there's six different criteria and categories. Having this program, I think, would take, take a lot of time, effort, and money. I think it'd pay for itself, so that that was one of the other things, as well as body cameras, and then just the normal. We got one advent, we got one advent tomorrow next year. That then will be good for squads for next year, so nothing out of the ordinary, besides, like I said, the body camera, the watch guard, I think, is is super important. And like I said, I put it on the uh, the June twenty-sixth agenda, so here we go.
We should see a reduction in taser supplies because Ben would use that as an enforcement tool to make sure that they filled out their.
It's just training.
Right. Let's just update the council staff since you're here and what we're at.
Technically, no.
Or did you just?
Right, we just, we hired, uh, we hired Brian Cameron, who's doing really well in phase three. Technically, on paper, we're still down four. Uh, we have one that we're, we finished the background, and he's just finishing up sort of the um. Basically, the physical, the physical stuff, yep, and then um, and then we're gonna be having interviews this week with two more candidates. So hopefully, yeah, hopefully we get that back going as well, so. Uh, technically down four, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, Brian's doing really well. Um, he's almost done a third phase. End of the summer coming up, Officer Boscara is gonna be coming out of the school. That'll help all the staffing as well. Uh, my intention is, once Officer Boscara comes back from the schools, goes on the street, I can put Officer LaVore back in her NRO position. Because I know summertime or whatever, a lot of the outreach and a lot of the activities go on, we need her to. we need her to coordinate that and, and that sort of thing, so.
And the one coming, who doesn't play with that much experience?
Yes, the one who plays with that much experience. So, um, we're hoping, we're hoping he, uh, once all that's said and done, we'll get it in front of you for approval. And then, once he gets hired, obviously, we'll be back for him, so. I am, I, I will say, though, recruitment retention, pitched that myself, Niall, and, and, uh, and our HR director, really, you all did. Guys are reaching out, officers are reaching out to different, um, friends, different departments. Um, I'm not opposed to poking other people's talents. I, I'm, I'm not afraid to say it. Uh, we've gotten a lot of great officers from different agencies. Um, unfortunately, some of our officers years past, you know, about ten years ago, have left. They have also started to say, hey, what's going on over there, because maybe the grass isn't quite as green, and they're seeing, they're seeing what we're doing over here, so. Um, if we can get, if we can get some quality experienced people, I'm all for it, so. I'm not afraid to say it, we've gotten, uh, a lot of good officers from different agencies.
One of our officers is the SRO officer at the middle school that my daughter keeps, kept coming in Apple Valley.
Right.
So we've had some savings because of salary, we've had some costs because of the workforce.
Yeah, so, and, and that's my thing too, is I know, um, backfilling shifts with overtime is not the answer going through. Uh, guys like the money and they like the paychecks, but I also want to make sure they have time off, I want to make sure they don't get burnt out, so. It's a, it's a double story, but I think, once we, once we get one or two more hired, it'll absorb a lot of that, that time and get the officers some time off that they, that they needed. I don't have to go, come, come before you in December and say, hey, I got these officers that have, you know, astronomical motivation in that they can't burn, I want to make sure that they can get a time off.
And then Chief, Chief Harder shared, I was the last one to share with Council, but, uh, the success of using body cam to resolve citizen complaints against officer behavior.
Hundred percent, yep. Yep, and that's why I think it's so crucial that, I was talking to our IT services and Mark's, uh, Dela Throes of IT as well, but if our server, which I said, uh, like I said, I'm working on a staff report here, um, if it crashes, it's going to be down for days, if not weeks. And I don't think the citizens and the service, um, we don't want that, for sure. And I think it's the responsible thing to do is to go to the cloud, uh, talking to Mark financially, it's, it's the best option, but yeah, speaking of complaints and, and squashing hiatus, and especially the, you know, use of force incidents that we've, we've had or, or, you know, will continue to have, having a reliable body camera system and, and vehicle system is, is critical. So I think that might be a huge investment.
We're not going to six-year, uh, chief officer, and if you, when you've had number of officers being, let's say, attempted to, or even inappropriate behavior, allegations filed, and so the body camera will clear this up, this situation.
Chief, I'm glad you're doing well from your mentor, Chief Harder.
Yes.
Just got this whole chief of, of the department, simply visually is.
I use, I use his line, I'm, I'm not, I'm not afraid, because, uh, you know, I know, and like I, like I talked about before, about, you know, everybody's grabbing everybody's talent, but, um, you know, being today, it's, it's, the culture, it's the leadership, it's, it's, sometimes the grass isn't always greener, and, and, you know, they require it in the back, so.
Well, I was just going to say, it, it speaks well of our PD that there are officers from other departments that want, want to come and work with you guys.
Right.
And then one final comment, the investments you made in the TNIs, continuing to be, they significantly, it's, uh, after de-escalation was current, we're still down two bikes in fourteen years from the dog park, so. Some of your, some of your presence, you know.
And then we're not going through dark neighborhoods and empty garages, because without bikes, it's, it's, right.
Chief, one final question before we move on, you know, from the pages of the budget. So you have two leadership positions that are currently open. I'm guessing your plan is not to address open tenure pack, but follow foot patrol staffing?
My goal is to backfill the deputy chief job. I want to advertise it and, and ask for it this summer from April and February, and have that filled by October. And after that, yes, I, I certainly want that for sergeant. I, I, it's super important, and, and it needs to be filled, I just want to make sure it's the right person, and they want the job, so. And right now, we have three quality and outstanding sergeants right now.
The delay on the deputy chief is a strategic decision on Chief's part, outside of his probation periods that that's going to be.
I recommend that we wait until officially, officially. That's why I like to, like I said, advertise, and by the time, by the time, uh, October comes, it'll be a seamless transition, and that person will be ready to go. And, and actually, I'm looking forward to, uh, passing on some of my duties onto, onto them, and, and, you know, get them going as well, so I think, uh-
Well, you're wearing two hats presently, right? Your old job and your new job.
Right, yep.
His probation requirements require that he have a transition plan for him and those other leaderships.
Okay, next, we got page twenty-one, twenty-two, which is fire department and marketing. You can go ahead and talk about a couple items here. The increase in contractual services, and then also on, I think we talked about, I'm talking to this morning, explaining the capital vehicle and equipment.
So right now, uh, the, the contractual portion of it, I just increased by percent. I don't, I don't have a number yet from the fire department, that should be coming soon. Uh, with regard to the capital piece, um, in the past, we've had significant budget, budget fluctuations as a result of capital needs within the fire department. And between myself and the finance director from Blaine, we came to the conclusion that we needed a smoothing, uh, mechanism, and similar to what we use here with our, uh, vehicle and equipment fund, uh, we're building up a fund balance within the, capital portion of the fire department, so that it smoothes out the capital needs over the years. The, the mechanism that we are using is, we currently have three different, two equipment certificates, and then one bond. And as those expire, we've taken the money that we were paying towards those and started building that fund down. So as one expired, one expired this year, one will expire next year, and then one will expire in twenty-twenty-five, so. As those expire, we'll take those dollars and put them in the capital piece of the budget, so that we start building that reserve, so that we don't have significant fluctuations in the future. And as Niall can attest to, uh, equipment is really expensive. It's gotten really expensive. Uh, so, and two or three years of, of, so.
This is a deal with those, one time, twenty-eight dollar piece of fire truck, and-
Yep, and just-
And planning for that versus having to deal with at that time.
Those one million dollar fire trucks are approaching two million dollars now.
Anybody else have questions on those two pages?
Mr. Secretary, just a little update. So the remodeling of station one and three, you going to duty crew, will it come from existing reserves? Or this, but it's under a hundred thousand combined, so there are modest numbers, and Chief breakfast working and getting those and getting them off, but I'm distracted, I was.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-six, any questions on those pages? What is, um, Don's not here, but what's BPZ testing, it's under thirty-thirty?
Yeah, you're all aware.
Back, back full test.
Okay.
You're all aware, Don's personal situation, and it was, you know, birthday of his son, so that's kind of, that's how it's been.
So we can, we're not that familiar, so, so we get some more pressing close to that.
I'm sure you might be in one of the previous pages, I pointed out to Mark this morning, I talked, uh, talking on page twenty-six, under thirty-two, twenty, a calendar description, a random piece we changed. I just, nothing. About twenty, page twenty-seven, twenty-eight, any questions there? And then, it's twenty-nine.
Are we still going, oh, yeah, still bash?
Yep, still in that.
Well, it's not changed in the public the last forty-three years.
Do you want to do your dreams? So, council, three hundred and forty-seven letters last year between Oakbrook and Lashport.
Twenty-nine and thirty, Mark, can you explain, um, on page twenty-nine, uh, you have to change in the very first item? Salary reason regular for Oakbrook Works?
So, at the, at the retreat, the public works director had made the case for adding additional employee, and, uh, that would take the form of an assistant public works director and/or, uh, a, a different position that would, it would be a superintendent position, similar to what we have now. So between those two, that would be the, the amount. We haven't, Don hasn't come up with a specific proposal as to how he wants to fill that, but that would be the style of agency that's active. Forty percent in the general fund, thirty percent in the water fund, and thirty percent in the sanitary super fund.
This will come as a reason why I asked Mark to explain, this is a potential reorganization of public works leadership that, uh, Don had presented in the work session. How about pages thirty-one, thirty-two? Any questions on those?
Well, the one thing you'll see on this page, and you'll see it anywhere where we have electric and gas, uh, electric and natural gas.
Thirty-three, thirty-four? Doesn't it appear that we have any major vehicle, quote, buy on, purchase plan for next year, Mark?
Uh, this is maintenance. This was the maintenance, sorry, yeah. But you're right, there aren't a lot in the base funding. Yeah, I think twenty-twenty-six, I think Pete-
It wasn't this coming year.
Pete would like it sooner, but Pete's writing checks, his body can't cash.
Okay, any questions on thirty-five and thirty-six? I didn't see any changes on, on the street pavement management.
There's no increase in asphalt, or?
That's just maintenance.
Yeah, that's, that's the maintenance side, that's, I mean, there's-
Okay.
What drives that is, is oil prices, and oil prices are outrageous.
Thirty-seven and thirty-eight? Actually, nothing has changed, or very little from last year to this year. Thirty-nine and forty? I didn't see any, any differences between this year and the proposal for twenty-twenty-four.
What do you like, the stop signs and stuff come out of?
Mark, stop signs?
Uh, it's, uh, forty-four, seventy-five. That's the street sign department. So sixteen hundred supplies, signs, posts, sign hardware, supplies, mailbox, and posts, on page forty.
Yeah, there's five thousand for street sign, fifteen thousand for post and so forth. And last two pages, forty-one and forty-two? Any questions there? Convention bureau, miscellaneous debt service, zero on your debt service.
Yep, that was the capital lease that we had for the, uh, energy improvements over the community center and city hall, and we paid that off early because it made a lot of sense.
Any other general questions? We'll move on to the next agenda item.
So we'll continue to, as we get better information, we'll continue to update this, and, um, if something significant happens between now and when you need to, uh, approve a preliminary levy in general fund budget, I'll be back before you. Uh, I think one of the more significant items is going to be the criteria on, uh, public safety grant, so.
Mark, would you say that the largest overall increase in the general fund budget is personnel costs?
Yeah. Uh, and now that you mention personnel costs, we're in the process of doing a market study for non-union personnel, and also some of the public works leads, leads. That should be done within, I think, the next two or three weeks, so we'll have something for the council by then.
Okay, the next item, is the one that Al is been waiting for?
Do you want to come up there?
No, I'm first. Work session minutes slash public comment, Niall?
All right, uh, council, well, this may look like I crafted this memo here, I, I did actually, but then attorney, uh, but his ass on it. So breaking apart, let's do the workshop minutes first, and, um, as I put it there, it's top, those few pieces and stuff, we're restating what we said, they're informal gathering, so a lot of this gets down to, you would, you would definitely, so you've got state law, and then you've got charter, okay? And whether this is a meeting, I mean, the, uh, we don't consider meetings, like, we can't take any action, there's no resolutions, there's no ordinance, there's no motions here. It's an informal gathering where you have discussion and give consensus. So our attorney has been very, I think, uh, consistent in saying most of his clients don't do that. I did, I think about myself, uh, as I'm, I put in her email, she's checked others, I went and checked, and I included, my research, and I included samples, of those you can form your own opinion on, value of those minutes. The attorney, um, his strongest reclamation is if you just insist on having some kind of record to use the agenda and just, uh, note that discussion occurred, and if you notice some of these minutes, oh, these aren't hills. They basically tagged up the discussion, you know, for me. We used the tape, uh, when we cleaned out the basement, which I know was done five to six years ago, we discovered tapes back to the seventies. We have a log down there that registers when people come and check them out, uh, no one ever checked the tape off, uh, of the work session. We discarded, most was in the basement, including those, except the last ten years, I just felt an affinity to the history of case, so we still have some of those, but, uh, that's the other thing. I was in keeping records now in digital, so you have less of an issue on that. So it really comes down to, you don't have to make any decision night, you're just seeing this night for the first time, and you had this, certainly this animal since in the audience, you can, because you, uh, she has, but I think her email included that when you got it called.
I would like to speak.
It's one of my places, but once you speak, we'll, we'll address the acting mayor, so, uh, I guess I'll turn it back to you, acting mayor.
Are you going to meet him?
Would it, would it not be, right?
Yeah, no, that's, it's fine. Um, I, I really appreciate you, um, I don't know if you were responsible for putting it on the agenda at the work session, I asked for that in the email that I sent to, to Niall and the council, and I appreciate it, because this is important, should not only- because this is important to not only me as a citizen of Nautu, but to a lot of residents, both of the items that were in my letter to you guys. So, right now, you're just talking about records being kept at work sessions, and as I said in the email, I did talk to data practices. And whether you call this a work session or a meeting, it is a public meeting. You know, it goes by all of the state requirements that you notify people, you know, the council has gathered together. And the fact that you are not making decisions, it still is a public meeting. And when I talked to data practices, they said, and I did reference the statute that talks about that you need to preserve all the records necessary to have a full and accurate knowledge of your official activities. And this isn't official activities. It's founded by certain things at the state level. And basically, I think just to be courteous and respectful to this community, now that it's not being taped, so nobody can go back to look at the tape, and certainly, most people's lives are very busy, they aren't attend all of these things. So, having some kind of a record, and they didn't say it had to be minutes per day, but they said there should be a record of what happens at these meetings. They are meetings, just calling them work sessions does not mean that it's not a meeting. It is a meeting of the council.
But it's not an official meeting as far as action, Valerie.
No, I'm not saying that. It is a meeting. And talking with them on two different occasions, with two different people, they said that a meeting of this body does require that you keep full and accurate records. So, a normal person's interpretation of that would be certainly an agenda is what you plan to do, but there are some things that happen sometimes at these sessions that were not necessarily planned. And I recall in one of the commission meetings, it referenced when you made a consensus decision not to go forward with as many architects, I believe, for the community center, and you eliminated it and went down to two. So, it was some kind of a decision, whether it was not, it certainly wasn't voted on and things like that. But just so that the public of this community has something that, and they don't even have to be posted according to the statute, but they do need to be accessible to the community should they do a data request. There needs to be something, and I did suggest to them that what we're doing right now is saying that the packet and the agenda by those records, and they said that really isn't a record of what happened. And so, I'm just sharing with you what they say, and sometimes I would hope that this body would not always do what they can get by with legally, with checking with and attorney, but thinking about what this community wants. This community clearly is asking to be kept informed and have an open dialogue, and that this is just another step that this body could do, have some kind of a record of these meetings. There's a lot, as we saw tonight, there's a lot that happens at these meetings, and there's no records. So, when you miss it, you have no idea, other than when people post on social media.
So, I have a guess, Valerie, that you would be a proponent of what Artis Hill is doing.
Well, there, most of the ones that were in the packet were minutes, weren't they?
Yeah, this is what Art, this is what Art is.
I will admit to you, I didn't read it. I did notice there were a lot of pages, a lot of pages.
Basically, what they were, what they captured is everything that anyone said.
Well, you know, minutes, technically, minutes should not include what everyone said. Minutes, the official way of taking minutes is, you know, motions are made, the verbiage of the motion, and then who's passed it and seconded it, and then how the vote turned out. A lot of people misinterpret what minutes mean, and they do not to be included in this like that.
And what you just described, though, is council, official council.
I'm not suggesting that you start taking minutes at work sessions. I'm suggesting that this council decides that they will have some kind of verbiage documentation that records what is happening at these work sessions. They're important in order stuff is happening, that if the public wants to look at them, and it would be very easy for us just to post them on the website, because obviously, you're right, most people are not willing to request them, and people do look at them on the website. So, that would be what my hope would be for this body with regards to that.
Even though the packet is posted for the work sessions.
But the packet, the packet is.
No, I know, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make clear that everybody understands that this packet is out there on the website right now.
Yes.
Any resident who wants to go look what's in this detail they went through on.
My example before with the community center where you eliminated, I don't, and I don't remember exactly what it was, but you married the field of architects that were going to be considered for the community center at the work sessions. Yeah, thank you for letting me speak.
Council comments? Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I've studied probably very much, and a lot of what she says is true. Just, you need to have some kind of, not record, but like I read that, like you, I was looking at Artis Hill, so they go, gee, they might as well put down what color toilet paper and what they had for lunch. That was totally ridiculous, totally. But from a problematian's point of view, yes, I understand what she's saying.
Eons ago, we used to. And it got to the point where, well, number one, trying to find somebody to record the meeting to come in and do it. We had scheduling issues with Nine North, which was not Nine North at the time, but, yeah. And staff could not do it. They weren't trained to use the equipment. And then the cost for doing, oh, back in the days when the secretary's sitting out here actually taking the notes, and in that, we had to cut down on doing that. So, what did we do? Do we not have council meeting minutes taken, or the work session meetings not taken? So, it came down to the work session meetings. It was cost saving eons ago. It was cost saving back then. So, you know, if we can do a simple, I don't know, what would you prefer? Would it, filming it or short minutes?
Well, let's take tonight, for example. So, Valerie, would this be an example we're looking for? There was a presentation by Tuppman, and there was consensus with the council, and we didn't look for it with a contract.
Yeah, some of the, some of the dialogue.
That would be a high-level recap, but.
Yeah, some of the dialogue tonight was such that you were, you know, well, hearing consensus about, you know, this and that, and it was happening tonight, and I know it wasn't technically a voting on things, but you were, you were, you know.
But we always do that at work sessions.
Yes.
It's how we get staff to keep going.
And I would like to see a record of that.
Now, any thoughts?
Well, you know, your policy decision, you're spending seven thousand a year on council minutes, and you have twice as many council meetings as you do with your workshop, which are twice as long. So, you could presume about seven thousand costs, just to factor that in. And then you'd have to decide what you want included, so there's on its and several votes and seconds and votes. Well, there are votes and seconds and votes. Everything here has to the council that's going to happen when you do that, so you know what to capture with. But then, so you have minutes that just recorded debate alone, and so you don't want that. So, you then have to settle on what do you want, which would be when you was telling consensus to bring forward, which you're going to have at your next council meeting, and that will be in the minutes. But if you want to duplicate and capture that, instead of do that, that's your policy.
You know, this isn't like my idea. This is in statute, and I, as a citizen of Nautu, went to the official people at data practices and asked them, are we within, are you lines? And they said, technically, there needs to be something other than what your plan was. A plan isn't what happened. And she said that, you know, she referred me to the statute, which I read, which I put into the email. So, this isn't like what I want or what you want. I feel like as a city and as a council, you need to be following statutes. I heard statutes referred to earlier in the evening with the dark, I can't remember what it was now.
The garbage code.
Yes, yes, that you refer to statutes. Well, this is being designated by statute. So, we need to do it even when maybe it costs a little or isn't something you necessarily want to, otherwise, go change the statute.
So, I do, they do have, you have to choose, we don't take your little advice.
Could I speak since I'm the last one that did a data, data request of not?
Mama, Mrs. Chaney.
I made a data request twice for work session minutes and so forth. To her point, you decline to carry something to the council meeting, how are we going to know that you declined?
Can you give an example? Because to be honest, I don't remember.
If you decline something, if you decline to do move forward with the second request of the youth vote tonight, you didn't make a decision, you didn't have a consensus, okay? It's not going to show up in the council meeting, that makes the council meeting. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but.
The only way we're going to know that is if you have.
How important is that, though?
Well, considering it's my tax money.
Well, we made a decision in favor of your tax money possibly.
It's a record of your.
Maybe I want you to spend my tax money on it. Those types of things, if you don't make decisions on it, don't make it to the council meeting, are just equally important as what you do make a consensus. Okay?
I mean, in the situation you're describing, it's staff looking for direction on do we spend any more time on this?
I understand. You're trying to direct your staff with your consensus what you want them to create resolutions for for the meetings, okay? But the issues that you're working on are also important to the citizens, and then if they want to have public comment at the next council meeting, okay? It's helpful to know what you're talking about in these sessions. Correct? So, I can go to the next council meeting and say, I want my tax money to go to that youth voter, because I think that's an important thing. Okay? But I wouldn't have known about it if I hadn't been sitting here, okay? Now, I also talked to data practices, okay? If the council is unwilling to present to the public what it's doing and so forth, every citizen has the right to come in here and to videotape this with their cell.
Yeah, totally true.
Okay? And if that's what it's going to take to get information brought to the public and so forth, citizens are going to be here doing that.
Okay. You know, how many residents do we typically have in a work session?
We maybe could get more.
That's a new controversial project.
It's more than that. It's more than that.
For potential.
It's more than that. I was here to find out why the solid waste, well, the survey didn't come out today, because that meeting I was at said it would be out on Monday. I didn't see it today.
Did we ever pass a resolution to not record meetings?
Meetings have not been recorded from a.
For this meeting.
For a paper standpoint, as long as I've been on this council, it goes back even before that.
To how they do.
No, the work section.
The work sessions used to be televised on Nine North, CTV.
Yeah, was there a resolution to not record?
I think so, I don't think that.
We have actually three resolutions going back to nineteen ninety-nine that says that we should be broadcasting all our open meetings, and then they've amended them to not include the Human Resource Committee. Well, at the time, it did, and then there was a couple other subcommittees, but there are multiple resolutions that have been signed by two different areas stating that we should be broadcasting the work sessions. So, when did we, why did we stop doing that?
Well, it was early COVID.
Well, it was a discussion of consensus when we're on the minutes.
Well, you mentioned broadcasting, and broadcasting is part of collecting the data that makes it accessible for people to.
That's the reason we don't, we don't say we broadcast.
Answer your question, we didn't pass a resolution to there. Directly consensus.
But when you have to pass a resolution to undo a resolution.
Then we would.
And furthermore, in relation to the minutes, there's, to say that we don't make decisions here is, it's very, it's very much stretching it. I mean, consensus by its general definition is to come to an agreement. We're going to see resolutions that involve spending taxpayer money because of consensus. So, I think it would be very appropriate for us not only to broadcast them, but also publish minutes.
When we broadcast work sessions, it's not a meeting, it's a published minutes.
We broadcast the council meetings, publish minutes for those. Artis Hill's the.
You do up until the end of March. There's no minute at the March.
They're in the packets, but.
They're out there, they're just, you're correct in that, there's a certain section for just the minutes.
Or those people that work full-time jobs and stuff, sometimes just reading the minutes is all they have time for. They don't have time for the videos or the packets.
Now, would it be possible if we had a person come in and take notes at this meeting that you? Well, it seems to me that this is what the people want. Is it, is it worth paying a woman to sit here for as long as these minutes?
Or a man.
A mayor, man.
Or a man, yeah, a person.
The policy decision, all you can, you could presume seven thousand spots, and there's your number. And with the common thread, if you do tape, and then they watch the tape that they're consuming, because you take off their travel time, they can be anywhere on the planet, do what person's having to travel here. And there's a few distractions, I think, whether there are any distractions.
Apple, mine, oh.
Well, wherever they are, whether they have to the home or the office, but can you take minutes again? It comes back to who you want to take your little advice from. Your attorney is advising you not to do this, you can talk to them on the twelfth.
I got a question. So, this is all about money then, right? Not the public here to say or say what we want. All I hear right now is dollar signs in people's pockets that you don't want to listen to us people, residents, in a way, because we've been coming to these meetings, this is the fifth meeting I come to, and not one so far as mentioning a problem that we're trying to fight. And that's the same with our web lands, you know, and every, every meeting has never been recorded. And so, right now, all I'm hearing is dollar signs, oh, it's going to cost this much more money if we have somebody come in and take notes and all this stuff. And how, you know, the mayor right there says he don't remember what she just got done saying. How does that get all communicated around where nobody is listening to anybody?
In their defense, the agenda items tonight were listed in, that item was not on the current agenda to discuss and so forth, that it will be at a future work session. That's another reason why they should be publicizing everything so that you know which meetings to attend to for the items that are important to you.
But the agendas, in defense of that, the agendas are posted on the website.
Yes.
For the, they're, that's what you said. The thing about the money is, yeah, it's going to cost extra, and we need to talk about that too, along with everything else. That's, that's not the only thing. Now, thinking back, when we used to have the secretary sitting here taking minutes, back then, some of our meetings went to two o'clock in the morning.
Morning.
Yeah, well.
And who, who remembers all that?
And that poor woman had to sit here till three o'clock in the morning typing minutes. So that's when we went to, she was not here. They could take the recording and do it from wherever they, they live. Yeah, I know, I know. No, we had, we had work session done eons ago.
It's eons ago.
Yes, when I was on the council then. So I, I wouldn't be opposed if we could, you know, get somebody to record these, these sessions and do the short, you know, this was brought up, so-and-so said yay and a and, and we want.
One of the reasons why recording the work sessions was talked about not continuing. And we have a former mayor who was part of those discussions in the council tonight was that it limited open and free discussion. Because of the fact it was being recorded.
I opposed that. I wanted it to be recorded. And I also wanted, as a comment, I think. I'm not correct. I see a room full of people here, lots of things on their mind, lots of consensus being decided about without giving a crap about. And that's not a welcoming and diverse community where every voice is respected and every voice is heard.
Thank you.
You open the door.
How do other cities do it then? How do they follow the rules?
So, so acting mayor, um, if we're going to go down this path, now we need to kind of have people come forward. There's, there's, um, like six different things later.
Can I say one thing before I let someone else say something as we come up here? Um, are we not recording, um, a lot of our commission meetings on video?
All of the commission meetings are recorded.
On video? And so to me, it's like, wow, a work session is not as important as your commission meetings. They don't have the authority, they're not the elected officials. You are the elected officials, so I would just put that out there.
Well, the planning commission, Valerie, does have authority to approve various.
Yeah, they're not the elected officials.
No, but they, they, they approve a variance, they, they out, and it's good to go.
Other, again, the charter commission, the parks and recs, are they not recorded as well?
They are.
They are, that's right. So, and what was that, you know?
Russ, at the risk of changing the conversation, I think we have a conclusion that the Indians will be satisfied tonight. Can we take, take care of the next item on the agenda please from the county? No, the.
Well, I want to do a, I want to do a public, I want to do a public.
Staff, we're not, we're not. Whoa, staff doesn't have a right on those work sessions?
Also, let's, let's, let's finish, let's circle back to the minutes. What are we going to do? Can we, I, I propose that we record them and we can, and have it published that some minutes. I propose we record and launch the work session and have similar minutes who are held as.
You want the full, complete, what everybody said?
Staff would agree with that.
Okay.
Because staff doesn't want to be in the position needed those minutes to take.
And who said what and not, not say what?
Capture what, so we do a full transcript. We'll get your words out there as well, probably.
I'd say I disagree with the whole. There's some things that there don't need to be. I'm talking from a parliamentary point of view.
Here's a question for you, okay? I mean, how strict are you taking the minutes for the council sessions, okay? When I come up to the podium to speak, you ask for my name and my address. For once have I ever seen that in a minute?
Very tight. I can tell you it was in the nutrition order.
Helen didn't agree, she couldn't understand.
I actually, I phonetically stumbled out, I hope you did. But I'm saying, I'm not asking for the work session to have a full accounting, okay? What I want a general idea, and I'm sure the staff would agree, is that the consensus of the council is that we're going to move forward or we're not going to move forward on these particular things, okay? If the staff is, is asking that they want more specific meeting minutes so that they have better direction and so forth, that makes perfect sense.
Well, that's what staff is getting is consensus.
Do we move it to the council agenda?
No, if there's confusion whether or not there's consensus.
Well, you're talking about this particular item, I'm talking about the previous items tonight.
Oh, I'm, I'm talking with, Niall was just talking about if staff would prefer having a full minutes and so forth so they know where to go for questions, where they know to go for support or redirection or whatever and so forth. They have the minutes to refer to. That makes sense.
Staff, staff doesn't need the minutes. Staff is clear, they either goes to council or it doesn't. It's a yes or no.
They never ever have a question.
The direction is not to go to council.
I'm saying, no, okay? If there were minutes, would it take less of the council's time if they had something referred back to?
No.
No.
Okay?
It's a yes or, to me, it's yes or no.
You're either going to go over the.
My suggestion related to, to this question about either minutes or recording or both is that we should, as a council, individually think about it and discuss it again at the July work session. Cause I'm not sure there's, there's consensus tonight on which direction to go.
We can give some estimates. You should have your.
You need to have your attorney here when you're going to make a silent decision. So we can do both.
Can we have somebody?
And get asked. Yes?
No, I would think.
Okay, okay. If you'd like, I could give you the name and phone number of the person I talked to or data, data services so that he has somebody who, who also, um, is that, is it.
They're very curious, you know, who the top two are.
They are very helpful.
Teams has a technology to record views. We can use Teams at all.
Well, if we record them, we would use nine north. So if you have sound desk, you can watch it on chat or it's team.
That'll be an additional cost.
During the work session, he said, residents and council are, residents who aren't going to like it, we're going to go ahead and do it on their street anyways. This is why I want to meet.
Just to circle back to the minutes for Kate, right? Does that make sense?
I, I was going to speak up and say, I think this should take all the work session minutes to the next work session date.
And that doesn't seem to continue, we mentioned it continued the discussion, we want two uses of integration.
On July 11th.
So that is.
Yeah, that would be a better way to continue.
Well, I can add a few comments that I'm, well, sorry, you said, uh, nine one nines.
Which one are you, we bring you?
Uh, I'm talking about I have one through six, or one through, uh, two five.
I was going to allow the public to comment after we got through the agenda.
Right.
And we're not through the agenda yet. So now I want to pick up the second half of item six, which is public comment.
Okay. You want to go now?
No.
This is, this is on a, for entirely different reasons.
Well, again, this is on, for number three, which is one that I think is a handsome. It's a growing issue and topic, not only here, but from the state's congress and the Minnesota legislature to colonies, to cities, at least across the state, but not across the nation, so. And you kind of break it down into two areas, uh, your workshops, which you have here tonight, but then a new council meeting. And new policy issues, this is your time topic, it's the people in the room. You demonstrated that, uh, there's some value to you to have the council have these discussions. Cause then you know what they're thinking, so if you're talking, they're not. So the more they talk, the more you get insights into that. But could you have other times, another example tonight is, yes, we have it, and we've had in the past where we didn't, so, uh. But again, the day you, uh, set the parameters, and getting back to these, you know, gets back to the definition, is this a public meeting? You're not taking formal action, you're getting back to your attorney, but your attorney's, I think, a little more lenient on this and saying, yes, but you should set parameters. He's got some cities that are getting more into work sessions. You've got some cities that are just not allowed, Minnesota legislature pretty much getting close to eliminating. So if you testified, you're given two minutes, you're admonished by the chair if you went out. So this is an item that's crossing all jurisdictions and is really striking that balance. People can write, that's the new thing in the Minnesota legislature, submit your comments and write, email those, you know, by hand. I think it's a little more intimate at the local, you know, it's going down the legislature and, and those have done it, it's overwhelming there. Uh, I think they put in here, Anoka County hasn't allowed public comment at meetings for years, now they do it only at the committee meetings, and they limit it there. So that the slate's wide open. You can move where you have public comment. You have some cities moving to public comment before or after, turn the cameras off, some people are playing the cameras, and you're getting that kind of behavior. You do what you want. My advice from Sarah, acting mayor, council is, listen to the folks here. I think this is similar to the last session, I don't think you should make any decisions tonight, so make that clear, that's staff's recommendation. Gather some input, do some more research, get, uh, uh, input. I know the city of Blaine recently has gone, I don't know if they've adopted yet, but, uh, they're going to, two people can speak for two people against, and it's two in each. So tell you the spectrum is just wide open on what you want to do. Others, if you got something new, then you can comment, but if it's yes or a no, it's all right for your poll, you'll have to know that. So, yeah, I think you listen to them.
And then some councils actually require, if you want to speak, you got to sign up beforehand.
It's a wide open slate.
But I speak to the citizens.
The mayor's in charge, you know, his opposite.
Um, yes.
Where is that where you can speak to? Can you let Mr. Ziegman finish?
Oh, yeah.
For this particular case. You were here for.
Okay, okay. Hello. All right, so I want to go over the, uh, the Dublin thing, my opinions on it, absolutely, one hundred percent. The C P Y, yes. Rapid associates, I say that we've got a website, let's make that work, why put money into that? I think that's a fork barrel. I think that is not a good plan at all. Let's develop our website, we got people that can do that, why hire somebody to do that? Uh, the draft on a general proposal in Washington, one hundred percent for police cameras, upgrading software, stuff like that. Now, there's a comment made about, uh, at the, at the festival in Park. Now, my youngest son was in the police explorers with New Brighton, they used to contract them to do, uh, security there. And my son actually did that for a number of years. Now, I don't know if there's legal ramifications to that, having, uh, having an explorer doing like, you know,
Oh, first aid.
Leasing people. Was that first aid?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, well, he, he actually did help with the crowd too, and, you know, move the crowd, but, yeah, first aid. So that is absolutely necessary, we, we need to do that. Absolutely, your software, get it, cameras, you get it, police dogs, you get it, because we need that. Uh, now, this is one that's kind of, well, it's a solid waste one. Okay, so, right now, if you, you negotiate with people and saying, well, okay, we're going to piecemeal it out, you get a few, five contractors, you got this job, you got that job, you got this job. That takes away your, your freedom of choosing who you want. Now, some of those guys come at right away in the morning, those hours, and some come in the evening. Now, that's, for later on, that's partially because of their route. Some of those, like, now, I have ACE. My ACE does not offer the Baxter, you know, the Baxter is, so if I'm tearing out my, if I got a, uh, water and I had to do that, and I had to tear out the wall and everything and replace everything, okay, I get a Baxter. So do I go over that waste management, waste management? Now, if waste management does not have that jurisdiction, they're probably not going to want to come there and drop that Baxter off for me. So what do I do? I have to follow myself through the junkyard. The argument that the guy had to suggest to me, I, I mean, about the trucks that going up and down on streets is, is pretty much BS. Yes, theoretically it does, but I've lived on older road and they resurface it every time or every three years. There's no major rocks or fest, those trucks are going. The traffic, a lot of times people zip down my speed because it's a shortcut to live and to over the long, long lane. So that is not chewing up the roads at all. Theoretically, that affects a little bit, but it's very, very minor. So if you take away the people's, uh, now, I, I have wait, I have ACE. Now, ACE, I found out, is not a local one anymore, okay? So, okay, well, that's business. But people should have their choice in who they want to take their trash. Not that you say, well, okay, this guy has this problem, you know, what am I going to do? Am I going to move? No. So you got to live with what you have. And like I said, the Baxter is only waste management. Now, also we talked about organics and stuff like that, and fourplexes and stuff like that, and big dumpsters and so on. Now, that's, that moves into a private service, which I think Republic is probably one of the big ones for the private services. Matter of fact, I have a public come, use them when I, when I was, I didn't work, I was contractor, I had them drop off a big dumpster, they take it away. Now, as a Republican, I want to do that. I don't, that's my concern, I don't, I think you're taking away free enterprise, I think you're taking away competition by doing this, by having, going to be selected followers. Open it up, this is America, people have the right to choose who they want to use and win and not be dictated. Thank, thank you for your time.
So now, what are you looking for, a bit of a public comment?
Well, I think, I'm turning back to you, Adam, here, but you could take public comment, you could have a discussion of yours yourself, it's.
I wondered if.
Introducing the subject.
I wondered if I might make a statement because I requested this be on your agenda, just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Valerie.
That's okay. No, that's okay, that's okay. Uh, it was the second item of my letter to you guys, and I appreciate you talking about it again. Um, and that is, we, we are not like every other city, we are a charter city. Every city in Minnesota is not a charter city. Um, so our charter gives our citizens certain rights. And it is not your decision to take those rights away. Um, our charter specifically gives citizens, it says, and I'm going to just read this little sentence, during any, or is any of its public meetings, the council, council shall not prohibit, but may place reasonable restrictions on citizens' comments and questions. So those two words are, at any of them meetings and shall not prohibit. And the, the process of, if you don't like that, or any citizen doesn't like that, we have to change the charter. This council does not have the authority to just ignore the charter because we have certain rights as citizens in this community. And this, whether you want to call it a council meeting or a work session, it is still a public meeting of this council. And thereby, the way that the charter commission rooted that, they wanted it to encompass any official meeting. And this is one of your official meetings. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It came to my attention because there's so much going on in our city and people were talking on social media that they were being banned from speaking at these meetings, which got me, I did not know that was in the charter. I should know, Brian, my husband, is on the charter commission. And he said, oh, no, that's in the charter, I went and looked and found it. So that's why I brought it to your attention. And I would assume maybe he didn't know that that was there, I hope that is the reason. But, um, we have to go by the charter, it's not up to. It's not up to the, the council to decide. So thank you.
So Mr. Ack, can we all go back to your question specifically? And with the attorney, but you knew public comment, where you want, you consent the restrictions. So that's really the discussion you should have. I seen another hand, great, so you think I may not want to recommend this one?
Go back in.
May I speak from here?
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna say, if you want to speak from there.
I would just like to point out to people that we do not have a full-time city council. In large cities, the city council every day goes to their office and chats about what's coming up next week on the agenda. The meetings that they hold, official meetings, is where they make the decisions and it's open to public comment. These people need time to work. We don't want them meeting behind closed doors. These work sessions provide them the opportunity to exchange information with each other. And that is the only way that a part-time city council will be able to function. They can't do everything with public comment on every single item they discuss. We're gonna force them to discuss things in public or go completely blind into every meeting. They're a part-time city council. They need to talk about their stuff, they need to look at their budgets, and they need to have, be able to have open conversation with us observing. Go ahead, guys, talk.
So back to your challenge, and I don't envy you. Is it reasonable to put public comment at this meeting? Yeah, it could be. Should you just put it at the end so you know the business on the first? That's one option. You put it first, well, depends on, you know, uh... For the residents in the room, I, I have made comment to my employers that we didn't necessarily need to do street projects, community center, organize trash all at once. But some of those things, it's the timing that we don't control. Legislative processes, legislative process. And we've been working on the organized trash for a couple of years. We'll be finding out what we're looking for. And we have street projects pretty much every year, every other year. And, yeah, they're, it's been wearing on all of us. So we've got more public comment than we normally have, and we've got more things going on. I'm just gonna make an editorial comment. I continue to work for the city because this council cares about making investments in the community. Listen for price-making investments. So we just have to figure it out. I think setting some time limits is reasonable. You know, like you seen the workshop, we have guests coming in, we wanna take care of those guests. They gotta discuss things. Public knows the comments at the end, or comment at the end, and see what kind of point we...
And now, that brings up a, a good point of what I was gonna do, like, you know, talking about public comment at the end or at the beginning. Now, when there's a topic that is very popular to be discussed and we do it at, at the, um, regular council meeting, like you said, we've got people that are here to speak on a specific item that we have on the agenda. When you've got a chamber full of people that wanna be heard, then we've got sometimes an hour and a half of people speaking. And now you've got these other people, whether it's an attorney or as a, I don't know, some business person or, you know, the, the Tubman people that were here to, to wait their turn. When we told them, you, uh, the meeting starts at six, you'll be up at six thirty. You'll, or six, you know, whatever the time that, that we can say, you know, your topic will be here. You could probably be up at seven o'clock. While seven o'clock rolls around, we still have people in the audience that are trying to, to speak their three minutes of, of time. So, you know, to me, the whole public comment thing now is at the beginning or at the end?
But don't they have some investment in waiting?
Nope.
I like it at the end because it gives you a chance to argue. I think three minutes is reasonable. I hope I get over to you.
Probably, yeah. You can't say that. We'll be watching.
I remember a time of speech I had.
This isn't a council meeting, council meeting, you weren't being forced, three minutes rule.
Six minutes or seven minutes, and now you gotta keep track of time. So I might have went a little bit over, but three minutes is reasonable. Because if you got ten people speaking for three minutes, that's thirty minutes, but let's say maybe forty-five because you got...
Ridley, you have fifteen.
Sherry was trying to make, you know, I'll use the last council meeting as the example. For those that were here, we made it, in approving the agenda, there was a, a recommendation that one item be moved ahead of public comment. And it was special order business because we had people that were gonna be honored, recognized. From fire department, police department, and, and, uh...
And...
Ohio.
Came, was honored.
Ohio, Ohio. Ohio, yeah.
Yeah. And so there were family members here, and so we moved it up so they didn't have to sit and listen to something that they had no interest in.
Maybe they knew, but they didn't know they weren't interested.
No.
Well, like, with this one, I, I respectfully, I'm not here to talk, I'm just here to listen. So I would not want to interfere with what you're trying to achieve amongst yourself. I just wanna hear what you're, what you're saying.
Yeah. We need, uh, we need hope. People that are just trying to listen.
We got, we got...
Okay, one quick question. How does a person get a, a subject on the agenda?
Now, I'm gonna see if I can...
So workshops, the gen items are a function of a non-written council policy. Uh, at least two of them wanna talk about it. And that's a practical policy, but if, at least two don't wanna talk about it, then why would you waste the time of all five?
Okay.
And so, I'll use Ms. Anderson, she had emailed the entire council. We've had discussion on it and options. So the other is the mayor can just say, we're gonna put it on the workshop agenda. So like, there, we wanna have y'all talk about this. So that's how it... The bu, the budget ends up on there because the budget needs to get on there. Uh, but, like, Tubman, we had requests come from the PD. So there's a process to...
Okay, I guess you're not really answering my question, is how does a person get a subject on, to get talked about?
You need to talk to your representatives.
Yep.
And then get two of them to agree.
Okay, who, who's our representative?
Us.
You're elected officially.
Okay, I'm talking to you now. How do I get this subject that I'm about to talk about, or like to talk about? You get it on, on there so we can all talk about it. Most of these people are here, is all on the same subject. We're saving the wetland.
No, no, it's not.
Wetland is gone. We're not talking about it.
No, there's other things that, that we're here for.
That would be, if we were doing public comment at this meeting, then you would be able to talk about that. If you're specifically talking about how to get an agenda item, then you need to talk to two of us. And then we would go to Nile and tell Nile that we want it on the agenda.
Okay, now, you gotta be confused. You're saying, you're saying public compliment. Compliment, you know, we're public.
Well, sir...
You know, it's not your land that's being screwed up. It's gonna be our land that lives on that wetland property.
The wetlands not on the agenda.
You can explain to...
Well, that's what I'm asking, why isn't it?
He's trying to explain to you.
Give him a second, okay? So...
Let's add.
Yeah. Yes, please. So, if, if we are at a place where we have public comment at this meeting, you can talk about whatever you want, right? But you get something on, the, the, the art and park development's already been on the agenda. You're gonna, and every time that there's an available public comment, you're welcome to come talk about that. But it's already been an agenda item and it, it, it may be an agenda item again, it may not be. We don't know.
Okay, I got a question for you, Ty.
Yeah.
You're the one that keeps telling us, keep, keep coming back, keep coming back, and keep coming back about the subject that we're talking about because you're against it too.
I am.
I know. And so, why can't we talk about it? We never have talked about it, we always get shut down about it. Because everybody says, oh, that ain't on the agenda. That, the property's sold already. Well, you know, we're trying to save that property to save our, I, I property value.
I understand that.
Okay.
And that's why...
Why, why am I getting turned down by everybody then?
Nobody's turning you down. Well, it... That's just a process, right?
Well, that's what, I know it's a process. That's why I'm asking, how do we get it on the agenda so we can talk about it?
So let me dig down. If there's no action for the council to act on, nothing's happening.
How we know there's no action going on? Well, we hear there's a lot of things gonna be starting to get hit up with it.
No, no.
It's not even, it's not even projects or...
So...
Nothing, nothing before, nothing...
I'm gonna think you had an acting there, if you permission.
Go ahead.
So, I believe at the last public meeting, I shared, we don't have a development agreement. We don't have a development agreement. There's, it's a concept plan. There's no development agreement. That said, there was a closed session, now since the last meeting, where the council met to discuss the sale price. Okay? And we're in the process of transmitting that to the developer.
Okay.
It's not happened yet, in the process. Okay? The developer can accept it or reject it. We could go back and forth five times, ten times, until there's an agreement, there's no development agreement. A development agreement will be a public meeting with a public hearing.
Okay, well, you had two of them. You had two proposals. One on the proposal, the first meeting was a proposal about dumping those other townhouses. Then the second meeting that had the same side block proposal in the first meeting, you know...
That was all concept plan, we should be back. That said, we'll be announcing tomorrow, I don't know how many, more than one, informational sessions by staff on what we do know and what we don't know. But if you come and argue with my staff, we're not gonna do them. Don't beat up the staff. The staff is just going to explain what we do know. For example, none of the wetlands are being touched. That's not part of development. They're not gonna be touched, they can't be touched, it's against the law. Okay? We know that. In fact, we're looking at adding to the wetlands and banking wetland credits. So it's that kind of stuff we can share because we know that now. Okay? But we're not developing wetlands, there's no development in the wetlands. So John will explain that. But I don't want John to get beat up for just explaining facts. Okay? And that's all that's being shared, is what we do know and what we don't know. But there's still no development, so there's no meeting. Hey, because there's still project.
But you're talking about land values. So if you come to an agreement, then it would go to vote, right?
The agreement will be a purchase agreement to development agreement.
Correct.
Yeah.
But you're...
That's all closed session because we're in negotiations.
So you...
And they may come to fruition and they may not. They don't come to fruition, no project.
So if the public has to say about it, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean anything.
Just like the other meeting, yeah. You don't care.
There's nothing to have a say about is what he's trying to say. You know, nothing has happened.
Council knows your post.
Okay.
I think that's fair to say.
Yeah.
They know your post.
Yeah.
But they're elected representative of the city. Okay? And so, they're doing what they think in their mind isn't in the best interest for the city. Okay? And they stand for reelection. And that's democracy, that's republic.
Pretty far off, though, it's far off.
But, but these information sessions are giving you the facts, not on a policy issue doing this. So you, we'll announce those, we'll do some during the afternoon and some in the evening, depending on John's availability.
Can you explain where, uh, wetland, uh, what is that called?
We can do a wetland delineation, a environmental assessment study, all of those things.
Now, the wetland points or something like that?
Credit.
Credit.
Wetland credits can be explained, yes. That's what would be explained.
Okay. Because I heard, I heard the contractor has a whole bunch of wetland credits where he can buy up all the wetlands and...
There's no truth. There's no truth to that at all. I have no idea where that came from. Absolutely zero truth, any of that.
Well, I saw the D N R, and the D N R told me that. And the D N R from up north, a good friend of mine.
Not true.
So Maunzu...
Very, very, very serious assessment done by the D N R, saying it has low biodiversity, there's no impact. That's the kind of stuff that'll be shared.
Will Maunzu retain, retain the wetland credits, then?
Yes, the cost is not the wetland credits.
Okay.
Okay? But then the value is significantly more than the cost. It's a math equation. There's a process to do that. You have to submit to the state board of soil-water conservation, and they determine whether you can do it. And then you do grading, and then it's a five-year process of planting, eradicating, planting, eradicating, planting, eradicating, because the wetlands are mostly about the vegetation. And so you need to get the right vegetation, so you plant the right stuff, and then you go eradicate the bad stuff. Then you can plant more of the right stuff and eradicate the bad stuff. And after five years, you presumably got it. And then you put it in the bank and people can buy it.
Thank you, sir. You explained a lot.
So, but it was premature for us to share this because we worked for enough long in the process to spend any staff time because we don't have a project. We have a proposal. So think about buying a car. Then you bought a car where you done back and forth. A simple, sticky proposal. Try to buy a car.
Like I said, thank you for explaining more of the, there's explaining a lot.
When you buy the car, there's no deal. And then after you buy the car, then there's all kinds of public meetings. There will be a development agreement, there will be a preliminary plat, probably a finite plat at the same time.
Rezoning.
There'll be rezoning, there's a P U D involved, and so John will explain what a P U D is.
Amendment?
But once it's sold, that has to happen or the developer...
I can share this, all of those things are contingent upon council approvals. The developer keeps all of there. Safety checks in place, we keep all of ours.
But if you sell the land, you have to rezonate it?
No. But I, I can share that because the, the buyers got it in there that if we don't rezonate, then they don't have the pants. That's why the development agreement is subkey. That's a major topic, that's a major decision. That's a meeting you're gonna wanna be at.
And when is that going to be?
We can't answer that because we're still in negotiation. We could go back and forth like this.
It's, down the road, you'll have your say.
I would stay with them the next two months.
Okay.
It ain't gonna be in the next two weeks.
All right, I, I thank you a lot for explaining more detail on that. A lot of riffraff nonsense I've heard through other people, different contractors, different cities.
The only one that knows anything are really the council from the closed session. But even council, the staff has got direction when to do the stuff, and so it's, you know, myself and the assistant. And the developer, the developer ain't talking. So if you're not talking to the one of three of us, you're talking to the wrong people to be good information.
Okay.
So unless you're talking to Dean Wadham or Paul, yeah, I don't know, Tim Wadham, yeah, or Brian or me, and we're not talking. As you've noticed, everything else is hearsay and speculation, it's not that.
Thank you. Carol Mueller, eighty-three, forty-three, Grove Under Road. You know, me, I like to take notes, I gotta go up in pages. I'm gonna go back to the organized garbage collection discussion. And my first question is, how much did we spend on the survey that's supposed to hit tomorrow between the...
Uh, I don't...
What was the purpose of the survey?
I don't know.
I can answer that. Uh, the purpose of the survey is to try and get an accurate number of people, probably needed to sixty-five people.
So, um, in your statements earlier this evening now, and it just, not to pick on you, it's just I wrote down what you said. Forty-five to fifty-five percent for, or forty-five to fifty-five percent against, we still have our work... Forty-five to fifty-five percent for, or forty-five to fifty-five percent against, we still have our work cut out for us.
That was tied to the spell.
That was tied to.
Community center.
No, that was tied, I have it down under the.
Something about these special events, you haven't done that yet.
And the reason I know that story was, is because you did the community survey, which we paid for.
That was for the community center.
No, John, I'm talking about the garbage.
We haven't done a community survey for the organized garbage collection.
What are you discussing with the garbage haulers on the twenty-sixth? Aren't you discussing the results of that survey on the twenty-sixth?
That's a survey that is gonna be available tomorrow.
It was supposed to be available today, it's gonna be available tomorrow. You guys are gonna get the results on the twenty-sixth. The garbage haulers are gonna talk to you about what was in the survey, but nobody ever said where that breaking point is. So if it's eighty percent against organized collection, are you gonna still work with that meeting with the garbage haulers and talk about what they can do with us?
So, you're talking about two different surveys, so I'll go back, and this week you might didn't. Forty-five, fifty-five was to the community center, it had nothing to do with Peter Ludeman, Ludeman Associates doing the community center. The other survey, and the reason I can't answer the cost, is we have Jacob, our former GIS, doing another contract, I'm guessing it'll be not even a thousand bucks for his time. And that one isn't a survey of threshold, because you can't answer all the questions. That's a survey on services and ranking of those.
So the survey that's coming out tomorrow, and that will be turned over to discussion late Monday to the council, and then discussion Monday night, the twenty-sixth, is what services do, does a community want from organized garbage collection?
Again, you were at the public meeting, so I went over this in detail. It's that, it's the pros and cons of that. But we can't make a decision until we get the price, because that's a major factor in the decision.
So does the, why does the public have input into the decision?
So, again, I covered this at the public meeting. You're gonna have input at the public meeting. That was question and answer, you're gonna have input on the survey, and then there's a public hearing when it comes back from the Hallways.
Right, and the gentleman, Sam from Kennedy and Raven, indicated, like in other cities such as Richfield, they had the discussion about the organized garbage collection, they had the public hearing, they closed the public hearing, and they immediately voted on the resolution. So when does that give the council an opportunity to think about and listen to the voices of the people that respond to the survey? Now, I don't know if, if eight of the ten of the community members are against organized collection. I don't even know if I'm against organized collection. But I, I think there are things that are happening very, very quickly. Part of it in the discussion in the work sessions, that you guys are so familiar with, that we're not, because we live down here attending in person as much as we probably should have. So all of this stuff is coming to us really fast, without a lot of transparency. And I see a community center expansion project coming down the road. We, we, as a city, will ask our voters to approve a sales tax and support a community center expansion. And with, with all of this stuff that's coming to us so quickly, without feeling like our voices are heard, do you really believe that people will back this body when they say, and now we need your vote on doing sales tax? And that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Well, so I'm just gonna respond.
Okay.
The council or the residents have had to equal all the time on the subject. Probably have spent all three of those hearings, but that's the totality of this subject, is this workshop and the public meetings, other than the original report that we do, it's a process, we're just following the process. There's gonna be more input from the public on this than just what I did with Peter Ludeman, it's only four hundred fifty, because every resident in the community can go to the survey.
Is one of the questions on the survey, yes, we want it, want this, or no, we don't want it?
There, there's pros and cons, and we rank how important this is, and then there's the ability under the other to, you know.
So, I understand there's some confusion about where the billing would come from? Okay, my husband just renegotiated.
That's not silly, I just think there was confusion, you know, determining that.
Well, you said in the very first meeting, that the city would be doing the billing.
I said, we've had advice that the city should do it, here's why, and that the finance director's not paying it out.
Okay.
And the council laughed inside, we've not had a special yet, because we've not got that part. You're at the end before we're at the beginning.
How about people that negotiated a price with the haulers currently, and so forth, that, that their contract with them is for that price for a year? Is that gonna be honored?
So now we're gonna start those public meetings, that those contracts go null and void, because the contractors know when they do the contractual with the city.
Okay.
Comes to pass. That's part of the statute, it just goes on here, it's going.
And the Hallways, you know that?
And the Hallways, part of that. The Hallways pass this statute, not us. There are laws that let the charge, but the statute. Like the legislation in statute.
Can we, uh, can we finish the last item on the agenda, we'll have public comment after.
Sure.
The last item on the agenda is special.
Well, we didn't actually.
We're, we're gonna bring public comment back in the sessions, I think we just consensus with each other.
Right. And you need to, and you need to possess what you want to do, you know. More here at the council. I hope to have more information than I do have, but I don't, so here's what it is. So the first two documents that are being passed around is from Kennedy and Raven, and the team approach, if I understand it. And then in the way for that pass around, there's some extras you'll have to share.
What can you turn one of the tactics?
This is not a tactic.
Right, because this was still coming to me today. And I didn't get the documents, it was promised to me days away. We'll comment on that. So if you go to the chart, that's the best way to look at this. Across the top, you have the heading of the uniform election dates, then you have the county advice timeline, the declaration of the vacancy that has to be done by you. Notice of the filing period, then the filing period itself, notice the county auditor, notice of election, notice election statute, allegations, and ballots. So those are all the different things that have to be considered. And so then I looked at the possible dates in statute, when you can have a special election. So in order to do the August eighth date, you couldn't meet, but notice of the county auditor, sure of a special meeting a few days after he died. And we'll be able to do yet at that point. So that date was closed. Which takes you to the November seventh date. So you would have to do the declaration before July tenth. So Kennedy and Raven is going to be here at the July twelfth meeting next week.
June.
June, I'm sorry. And a resolution will be prepared for you to consider after you come on to declare the vacancy, which will put in the process for the November seventh election. Then, the filing period follows, et cetera, et cetera. There's a key date Scott will be here, again, it's his off day, but I asked him, I think maybe he remembers from returning after me, okay? And then you carry on with all those dates. Under the example of one of you wanting to run, and you're successful, okay? The February thirteenth date works for that election. I'm gonna take a shot at if you wanted to run, and you wanted to give notice such that we could have that election on November seventh. I believe that you have to give your notice by July tenth, and you'd have to resign by August first, but I don't see that. I'm just going off a conversation, so Scott will be here to explain that to you. Whatever I said disregard, regard will he tell you. Because that one I don't fully understand. What you need to know is that it will be a resolution for the next week's happening, if you act upon declaring the vacancy, which is the trigger of the June, November seventh election. Questions?
Filing date.
So, okay, so.
From fifty-six and seventy days prior to the election.
Okay, so filing is open between August fifteenth and.
Right, and see that's, this is better, or Scott, I'm gonna pass out. No, uh, Dave Triplet.
Actually, filing period between August twenty-ninth and September twelfth.
Yes, so that's it.
Oh, so we have between August fifteenth and twenty-ninth to put out the notice.
On the filing period.
Scott will slam, yeah. Let's see if it's in here. Yeah, I don't see it there. So I reached out to Dave Triplet at, during the twenty elections. And so you see that in there in second paragraph, third paragraph, last of the staff that reached out right in the pool. Scott, and if they reach out, then they have to work through the county attorney choice, okay? So, Dave Triplet confirmed the November seventh, and then he said, I'll give you a quote in the next couple days. Well, I didn't give a quote, but he said in that email, it'll be a lot less if it's on the November twenty to twenty-five hours as compared to if it did done in August or in February thirteenth, it'll be more expensive. I would, I would hope by Monday we'll have that quote, I'll tickle him again, primarily because the school district has an election, never have an election, so that'll be your, your number. Then, as it's related to this, Gary asks, he asked me to get you feedback. This is on the issue of, do you need an acting mayor or a vice mayor? And the short answer is, you can do what you want. You can do a vice mayor, Gary, he's absent, or add a meeting where he becomes absent because he's ill, for example. You suspend the rules, and then elect a vice mayor. You're not taking any action on this, this is information, just so you know what to do.
My question, I just, my question is, is this like.
Here's additional copy of the.
That you elect that vice mayor just for one meeting, or is that?
If you suspend the rules.
Okay.
If you suspend the rules. I don't. Get your advice from Scott Monday night, I think you can do either one, it's probably the same. I did bring this email from Dave Triplet.
You're out, no.
Well, you got to send it to me.
Here it is, please, you need to. So that's just for you, again, you can remain in contact. So here's the one from Dave Triplet, he's the one that said. No, he didn't have it in here. Yeah, yeah, the cannon filing's open August first. So I, I think that's if you wanted to have the council election, then two, again, ask Scott on that. And then he was gonna give you a quote, but he hasn't got the quote, there's the twenty to twenty-five hours. I had asked for questions, but I didn't, Scott didn't answer those. It's better if Scott answers these questions.
Well, bottom line, it isn't, you know, we all, it's a special election, November seventh.
November seventh.
It's still a vacant day or something.
No. And if one of you files, that should be. Files and wins, then the seat becomes vacant immediately. That I can help, if you run, and you win, uh, the higher level immediately vacates your pre-conceivable, you have to vacate the, you have to pass a resolution and then go to vacant.
All right, since it's outside three hundred and sixty-five day.
Vacancy is triggered by the resolution they adopted.
Yeah, well, anybody, if anybody ran, it would be an open vacant seat for that seat, we all have more to hear left.
If they're elected.
If they're elected.
If they're elected.
But there, there is a severe work, you can resign. You did that early enough, and you ran, well, for matter, if you wanna run, if you resign, then that election could also be a little bit.
A right, yeah. Because that would be a gentleman.
But there's a time that you'd have to do that.
Did she steal her? No.
Um, there's a lot happening here, and I don't want you to think that I'm here, I just speak for myself, that I'm only here for one issue. Um, I, I've been learning a lot the last month, since I've been aware of the Arden proposal, and asking a lot of questions, and reading and watching videos, and all of the things that you provide, and, um, just know a lot of the, um, a lot of the things that are happening, that are, seem overwhelming, are a lot, are part of the components of twenty forty plan, and that was created in twenty twenty, and I saw the data on there, it's, you know, that was during COVID, and, like, I have little kids, I don't know what was going on here, and I, I was very, I was very sick for two years, and I'm just now better, and I heard about this, and have the ability to, um, get involved.
I think the committee, the task force that that, that, to help staff develop that action in twenty nineteen. Right, Carol, because you led that task force.
Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Yeah, over a year.
But I mean, I don't, because you guys are meeting here, you weren't meeting in some, maybe, maybe towards the end, but not when it got kicked off.
Yeah.
And then staff had a lot of work to do, which is why they ultimately passed that twenty twenty date as far as adoption.
Like September, it's towards the end of twenty twenty.
Because after it gets initially drafted, it has to go to the metropolitan council, actually has to go to the neighboring communities first for input, if I remember correctly.
Process.
And it has to go to the metropolitan council, they review, and they send back all kinds of deep corrections.
Yeah. And I'm not aware of all of those processes, and I am, you know, I, I take a lot of time when I vote, trying to choose who I vote for, and, um, I've voted in a few elections here, I've been here seven years, and so, uh, but I just trust that, you know, I, I had a baby in twenty nineteen, and then I, and then COVID, and I have three little kids, so, um, when I hear about all this stuff coming, and then I start to, I learn about it, it's just very overwhelming to, to be, um, to realize that the things happening now were a plan from a few years ago, because I didn't understand it before. Because I didn't understand it before, but I'm just starting.
Well, and that's, that's actually a requirement of every municipality in a metro area. The comprehensive plan, I think it is, is it every ten years?
Every year. It's a quarter million dollar investment by the city.
Awesome.
It's, it's, what do you say, obsolete the day after it's adopted?
Yeah, that's.
That too. Plan obsolete the day after you adopt it. This is. Statutory burden.
Can you, can you vote to change it at all?
Yeah.
You can.
Process. It's, it's the city's best planning estimate of the future. But it's subject to change as things change. But yeah, there's a process to change it. If we're talking about the art project, there will have.
Very reliant on the past plan also.
The only process you have to change.
I just noticed that that area didn't have, wasn't, didn't have the rezoning on it in the original twenty twenty plan, so.
Same thing on the multifamily and the ballpark that we had to do. On twenty ten and some of those.
Um, and then on the, I mean, I'm interested in all of this, I'm just, like the charity, like, you know, I, I hear about where our charitable fund is going. I was curious why we would show our, our bills to the haulers? Like, it's like showing them our cards. Like, you know, why are we, are they supposed to be competitive? Do they know each other from where?
Well, they don't share the bills with the city. They already know what they're charging you.
But he said, or you said that, you said it earlier that you would show them the, the results of the survey and the bills. So you're not going to share that?
The bills are not going to be part of the survey. That's a separate thing for me to calculate. So we can see what they come back with and how it compares. Yeah, we're not, that's not part of the survey. That's a, a separate class. If you share it with me, we can.
But the way you said it earlier, it, it just seems that's.
Your blood condition.
It, no, and tonight, when you said, um, so, yeah. And then, um, yeah, that is mostly.
Valerie can attest to this. If you email me, I email you back.
Yeah.
You don't have to come here. You can call and email me with questions that I email you back. Typically email.
Yeah, I met a guy, a guy from the state of Minnesota. He works in the garbage or in the hauler business for the research department. And he sent me like a two hundred and forty page document on their research. And I was, I was going to reach out to you this weekend and send that over in case you're interested in light of garbage hauling. You know, I'm sure you'll keep into it. But now, but, well, thank you for your time.
Anyone else want to comment?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Rebecca, if you can ask.
Now, you mentioned that the garbage haulers are the ones who had set up these rules of the state of Minnesota. It is advantageous to the garbage haulers only to have to drive down a quarter of the streets in town instead of up and down every single street as well, isn't it?
There are two, there are a couple of advantages to haulers that they don't necessarily publicly make. One, it is exactly what you're talking about. It's more cost efficient for them if they are picking up every house on the street. Now, like in my neighborhood where I have four of them that come in and then a couple, now maybe like one or two customers at most. So it is more cost efficient. The other thing that they will talk up, they don't talk about is that in an organized consortium environment, they have, they know what their guarantee, what their revenue is going to be in that, for that city for the next seven years of a contract that's required by state statute. They don't have to spend any time on trying to pick up new customers. They don't spend any time on losing customers because they maintain their market share. So, so if Ace and Walters each have forty-five percent of the city of Moundsview's market share and the decision ultimately to go to organize, they will retain that percentage. It's just that they will have a very, they will have a designated geographic area that they, they service. So yes, there are advantages to that.
So when Walters doesn't pick up my garbage again, do I call the city or do I call you?
They would still be longer providing the service.
They've been less than reliable this year.
Yeah.
In any instance, the, well, the customer service calls would go to the hauler. If there's a building discrepancy, that's our problem. That would be our problem.
If we take on the bill, if the finance director is not a fan of it, so. But he's retired. We've tried to get him to stay.
You're pushing him on with this.
No, he doesn't, he doesn't know how many handcuffs we have in the police department. So. And we have the key seat that's holding.
There's that one small point as to if we have a project or don't have a project. The common conception, I think amongst the audience here is by the time we have a project, we might as well all go home. What we're striving for is to have input before we have a project.
And I think you've had an opportunity to provide that, correct?
No, we keep getting told we don't have a project.
Well.
You think thirty-two people spoke at public comment?
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, thirty-seven.
I managed.
See, for the council, when it's not on the agenda and it's not an official project yet, we're not in a position to be able to respond to your public comment. But you've obviously made your feelings known. You may have known at this meeting. Um, I know they were made known for those who attended the park recreation and forestry commission meeting, even though that commission has absolutely nothing to do with the project. Now, the planning commission has some say as far as recommendations. And, um, the development agreement, that type of stuff actually goes through the planning commission first for their input.
But it's discouraging when you stand up at a council meeting and compare us to Shoreview and what a great mayor she was and how she did this for the, for, for the community, even though it was not popular and so forth. You don't give us a whole lot of confidence that you're listening to us when you say things like that. We, my husband and I have lived in, in Moundsview over forty years. We trusted Harold and previous mayors to make sure the sanitary system was working. We had a police department. We had a fire department. That we had parks and rec programs and so forth like that. We never worried about our city council. We never worried about our city council. Okay? And I understand that we need to grow and, and, but I don't think we need to compete. Okay? We need to develop businesses in our boulevard and things that people want to come and see in our beautiful city that we want to live in, that we have lived in for a long time. But we need to understand that this is a small bedroom community with really tight people in it. And that's why people come here. It's not just for the school system. It's not that, because we have neighborhoods that are wonderful. And we don't need grand ideas without our input happening to those grand neighborhoods. Okay? And that's what we're asking you to listen to and take to heart. We voted for you because we had confidence that you were going to take care of the police department, the park department, the sanitation and all of that.
Are you saying that we are not presently taking care of those departments? That's what you're kind of implying.
No, that's, that's the expectation of city government. Okay? What you're going for is a grand dream that the city citizens of this, this, anybody sitting here may not share with you. And we're trying to tell you. Okay. I just saw a very defensive backup regalia. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to point fingers at you. I'm not trying to point fingers at you. All I'm asking is the council.
Taking your shots at me, Mrs. Johnson.
I'm asking the council to please listen to its citizens.
And you're right, and the council is listening. But the council ultimately is the one who makes the decision. When you vote for someone.
Is that what you just said? It didn't matter?
Right, yeah. There was no positivity in the last meeting from you guys and you guys don't listen to us.
Your permission to make.
And one time I was pointing on a lady, uh, the very first meeting, April twentieth. And you probably didn't like that I was pointing for her if she wanted to talk. And I was right and you finally let her talk. Heather. And you guys don't listen to us. And there's no positivity for the development.
And you're right. Our power is in our vote.
Acting Mayor, Mayor House.
We're not stupid either, so.
Acting Mayor, Mayor House and I, we'll meet with anybody. We made that offer to an individual sitting in this room who declined to meet with us.
I won't do it unless it's recorded.
You want us to listen, we offered one-on-one with the city administrator and the mayor.
And I won't do it unless it's recorded.
Recorded, we don't care. It's like recorded. We didn't put any conditions on it. But don't tell us we're not listening to you when we offer a one-on-one meeting with you and you decline.
Again.
Offer it again. Tape record. So I'm still being. If you are, for you. Recorded, there's nothing I would say that I wouldn't retract.
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to get into personalities. All I'm asking is the council as a whole, please start listening to your citizens. If anybody else disagrees with what I'm saying, please say something. But if you don't feel like you're, you're not being heard, you got to start saying something and then go vote and get other people out to vote.
Anyone else? Next council work session is Wednesday, June, July fifth. The next council meeting is Monday, June 12th. We are adjourned.
Before you all leave, I'm going to make a reminder that on Wednesday at Manitowol Grill in White River Lake from three to eight is a fundraiser for the Moundsview Police Foundation. They will be getting a percentage of whatever is.
Yep. Total sales. It's advertised as three to eight, but you can show up anytime throughout the day and, and, and that total is nice enough to give us ten percent of the sales.
The dog will be there. There'll be a bake sale going on. T-shirts will be sold.
The planning commission, we just canceled. How is your father?
Yay!
So.
Please come.
Daytime, day one, real time.
Do you have contact with the regular?
My aunt, so they'll.
I think you misunderstood something, which caused some. Unhappy with you? Just that on the agenda, the comment? Okay, we were talking about.